Good morning. We've got a quorum, so let's get started. We have one item to take up before close session. That's the labor update. Jennifer Shembry.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Jennifer Shembry, Deputy Director of Employee Relations. On March 26th, the city provided the POA with a wage and term proposal, and they immediately responded with a counterproposal, which is in front of you. They had previously provided us a proposal that was a 10 percent wage reduce -- wage increase in the first year and then 3 percent in the following two years. And in this counterproposal, they took the third year off of that. So it is a 10 percent wage increase in the first year and then followed by a 3 percent in the second year. That 10 percent wage increase in the first year would be an approximate $22 million. Also recently, the POA provided us a counterproposal to the city's second-tier proposal that was provided to them last year, and that is also in front of you today. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. I have no requests to speak, so we're going to close session. We'll be returned at 1:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a San Jose City Council meeting for April 9th, 2013. We'll start with an invocation. Councilmember Chu will introduce our invoker.
Thank you, Mayor. And it is my honor to introduce Honorable Ted Viet Thong from Tulung Buddhist Temple. Establishing May 2011 and operated in District 4, Tulung Temple exists to manage the art of happiness. Tulung Temple serves the Silicon Valley community who are interested in Buddhism, virtue, value, and Vietnamese culture and language. They are committed in practicing the Buddhist teaching of loving, kindness, compassion, joyfulness, mindfulness to the community so that they may be integrated into our lives and those around us. To preserve, promote, and foster the Buddhist religion and philosophy, the temple hosts annual events such as the Buddhist Birthday, Parents' Day, and the Vietnamese New Year's Celebration. In serving the community, Tulung Temple offers youth program for children's age 6 to 14 to learn Buddhist value and Vietnamese culture and language every Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. 11:00 a.m., sorry. Two hours. It would be too long for the kids to study the language for so long. They also participate in offering food and closing to the local homeless shelters. Today, we're honored to have Honorable Viet Thong to lead the invocation. Honorable Viet Thong is the founder of Tulung Temple, who grew up in the monastic life of Vietnam. He pursued his master program in religious study in India and migrated to the United States in 2006, serving as Vice Secretary of the Vietnamese-American Unified Buddhist Congress in the United States of America. So please welcome Honorable Viet Thong and Honorable Nak Dug. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us today. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. We're being joined and led today by third graders from Devaris Elementary School from District 1. Thank you for helping us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your heart, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
That's four classes of third graders from Devaris Elementary School from District 1. Thanks for helping us out today. First item of business of the orders of the day. We need to make a couple of changes from the printed agenda. First, we'll be adjourning this meeting in memory of Peter Carter. Items 3.4 and 3.5 have been recommended to be referred to April 23rd, as noted on the agenda. Any other changes from the printed agenda order? Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak on the item 3.5. And for the record, I asked staff to have the agenda language be a bit more consistent to the direction that was given at council on the 26th. I have the memo here, and I'd like to point to that memo. I think we've had a conversation with the city attorney offline about that and a city clerk as well. I don't know if I need to make it any clearer today, or did you need me to read into the record what that memo stated?
No, I think we can take it up with rules tomorrow. It's to have options, not just to go to the Elections Commission.
Great. And some folks, interest groups that have a passion for this issue have asked for a deferral beyond that timeline. I'm comfortable -- well, I'm comfortable asking that now, or would you rather take that up tomorrow? Rules, I think they've asked for an additional two weeks, if that's okay with the mayor and council.
My guess is that'll be okay. I would just say we just take it up at rules tomorrow and figure out when the appropriate date is.
Okay. And I'll, for the record, just let you know the folks had asked for an additional two weeks beyond that two weeks listed here. Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes to the printed agenda? Noting those, we have a motion to approve the changes in the orders of the day. Can I get a second? Okay, we have a second. On the motion, all in favor, opposed, and non-opposed, orders there are approved. As I noted earlier, we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Peter Carter, who was a friend to many of us in the city. Councilmember Constant has some comments.
Thank you. March 6th of this year was a very sad day for not only me personally and my family, but for many people throughout the greater San Jose area and, quite frankly, far beyond that. Peter Carter passed away suddenly, two weeks past his 70th birthday. All of us know Peter in some fashion or another, but I want to take a few minutes just to talk about him as an individual, talk about some of the things that he's done throughout his life, and a few personal comments. Many of us know that Peter was one of the Bellarmine Boys. He graduated from Bellarmine College Prep in 1961. Following that, he went to Georgetown University in Washington, DC, where he graduated in 1966. Peter was very active in politics from early on, in his early years in DC to his years working at the state capitol here in California and throughout our valley here, from the town he grew up in and lived in, Los Gatos, to San Jose and all of our surrounding communities. In his main profession, he owned and operated one of the most successful, long-serving ad agencies in our area. And Peter was the man behind the brands that many of us know in our high-tech industry and many other professions throughout Silicon Valley. Peter was very active socially, and I think every one of us up here and probably thousands of people who are listening have been to some social event with Peter, whether it be the Los Gatos Social Club, his work in the Rotary, his work on the Los Gatos Police Foundation, or just one of the little social affairs that he had at his home on a regular basis. Peter was one of those people that not only loved to meet people, but loved to really develop and build relationships with people. Peter and I also had a big connection in photography. He was a photographer in his early years, and I actually met him when I was taking his picture. Most of us experience because he's taking our picture, but I met him when I had the opportunity. I was hired to photograph him many years ago, and we struck up an immediate friendship. I think he set up our first coffee appointment before I was even done taking the pictures. And those of you who know Peter know that that's not an uncommon thing. We had the great fortune of working on a lot of photography projects together. He was very gracious when I opened one of my many businesses that I had before getting elected, and he really wanted to be supportive of new, young, upstart businesses. And he donated to me and my partner the use of his building for almost two full years to help us get our business established, and he did it purely out of the goodness of his heart. My family really got to know Peter over the years. In fact, I think Peter is the only person that my kids consistently refer to by his first and last name. They'd always be saying, "Are we going to go see Peter Carter? How's Peter Carter?" Whenever they heard the word Peter, they wanted to know if it was in relation to Peter Carter. They loved him like a grandfather, his family. Of course, they loved the candy room in his house that he had for all the children that would come visit. But I know it was a big toll on my family when we heard of his sudden loss. And my children cried because they all remember the times we spent together in Santa Cruz with his grandkids, just having great family times together. Peter survived by his wife Denise, his two children, Scott and Sean, their spouses, and four grandchildren. This weekend, we had the public memorial service. I know many of us were there. I saw you guys there. There was well over 1,000 people there, and there was not one person that you could go up and talk to who didn't think that Peter Carter was probably their closest friend. And he was the type of person that when he was with you, you were the most important person, and he treated you as if you were his best friend all the time. He's a special man to a lot of people, particularly me and my family, and I know many of us up here. He's going to be truly missed throughout this valley, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to honor him.
Councilmember Licardo.
I wanted to thank Councilmember Constant. His words could not have been better said. I just wanted to add that Peter's generosity of time and spirit and energy was just legendary, and I'm grateful to have known him.
Thank you. Our next item of business is the close session report. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor. We've been given authority to pursue appellate review in one case. It's Ted Smith versus City of San Jose. The substance of the litigation involves the Public Records Act, and the vote was unanimous.
Now move to ceremonial items. I'd like to start by inviting Casey Halken from Silicon Valley Faces to join me at the podium as we present a proclamation declaring a week of April 21st as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in the City of San Jose. Crime can leave a lasting physical, emotional, and financial impact on people of all ages and all economic and social backgrounds. In addition, crime victims face a criminal justice system that's often challenging to navigate. Each year, victims, advocates, and compensation analysts provide comprehensive services to crime victims throughout Santa Clara County. These services include crisis intervention and assistance during the criminal justice process. And since 1981, National Crime Victims' Rights Week has provided communities with the opportunity to honor the victims' rights advocates. So we're here to present a commendation, declaring this week a proclamation declaring this week of April 21st to 27th as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in the City of San Jose. We're going to present it to our Silicon Valley Faces Victim Witness Assistance Program, and I think Kelly is going to tell us a little bit about that.
Good afternoon. My name is Casey Halken, and I'm the director of the Victim Assistance Program here in Santa Clara County. It's a program of a larger nonprofit, Silicon Valley Faces. For more than 45 years, Faces has served the communities of Silicon Valley. Through educational programs like Building Connections and Camp Everytown, we transform youth into community builders. Likewise, through our Victim Witness Assistance Program, which Mayor Reed mentioned a bit earlier, which is affiliated with the DA's office, we empower crime victims to thrive. That is our primary mission. And our talented and dedicated victim advocates do provide direct services, as Mayor Reed mentioned, things like crisis intervention, emergency assistance, and court support through the criminal justice process. Likewise, we also have compensation analysts that work with victims to assist them in applying for compensation through the state, through the California Victim Compensation Program. And every year in April, Faces is honored to join with victim services agencies throughout the state and across the nation in celebration of National Crime Victims' Rights Week, which this year will be held between April 21st and the 27th. And this year's theme is New Challenges and New Solutions, which celebrates the spirit that we hope will continue to inspire us as we overcome the new challenges that we will face as a victim services community. We at Silicon Valley Faces are dedicated to providing professional, innovative, and compassionate victim services, and we are honored to serve victims here in Santa Clara County and in San Jose. We are grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today about a little bit about what we do for the community, and we respectfully accept this proclamation and are very grateful. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite Councilmember Oliverio and Don Perry from the Early Child Care Committee to join me at the podium as we're presenting a proclamation declaring a month of April as Young Child Awareness Month in the City of San Jose. Looks like we have some young children to make the point. Come on down.
Mayor Reed, look at your parenting skills. That's amazing. Mayor and colleagues, every year, the city council declares, as long as well as done nationally, that April is the month for raise awareness on the social, emotional, and educational needs of young children. And to speak more about that briefly is Don Perry and our assistant, our library director.
Thank you for this moment. Since 1988, every April, the City of San Jose has proclaimed the month of the young child. But it's only been in the last decade or so that through brain research and child development research that we've concluded that those first five years of childhood lay the foundation for a child's future school and life success. So the theme of this month of the young child is explore the possibilities, because each young child, as each one of these up here, have the potential to be our future innovators, our future leaders, or as their T-shirts say, future council members and future mayors as well. So we thank you for the opportunity, and we have commissioners, early care and education commissioners, Linda Sendeck and Gwen Nguyen, who Gwen Nguyen is a childcare provider, and these children are from her childcare program. And Linda, these are her, this is her son, Christopher, who is going to be accepting the proclamation on behalf of the commission. Thank you.
the podium as we present a commendation to International Technological University. Councilmember Licardo will have the details.
Thank you, Mayor. We're also joined by Councilmember Kanson Chu, who I know has a long friendship with the late Dr. Shu Park Chan.
We're here offering a commendation to an institution that will become an institution, I know, here in the valley. Founded in 1994, the International Technological University was created with a vision by Dr. Shu Park Chan, who's something of a legend both here in the valley as well as in Hong Kong. And unfortunately, we lost him in February of this year. But his vision was to bring the best and the brightest from throughout the world to Silicon Valley, to be able to extend the innovative, scientific, and technological excellence of the valley to the entire world. And so, with a mission of providing graduate-level courses in engineering, computer science, business administration, digital arts, and various related technologies, as well as interdisciplinary programs in biological, physical, and social sciences, ITU provides a complete picture for those who are looking for graduate programs that'll enable them to excel in increasingly sophisticated technological world. They have achieved WASC accreditation, which is critical, of course, as they continue to build on their rapidly growing stature here in downtown San Jose. We're thrilled to have ITU part of our educational ecosystem with great institutions that we have in San Jose today, and we look forward to doing all we can to support their growth. We're honored to be joined by Dr. Greg O'Brien, as well as Yao Jin Chan, who is Dr. Chan's son, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you for being here. Liz Lee and Dr. Michael Duffy. Thank you all for all that you do for our many students here in San Jose.
this recognition. ITU's achievement is important because it provides an important asset for this community. As a university now accredited to offer the PhD, the Doctor of Business Administration, and master's degrees in most of the fields that feed our Silicon Valley economy, ITU is fulfilling Dr. Shu Park Chan's vision of bringing global development through Silicon Valley education with students here and eventually students around the world. Thank you again for the recognition. Thank you.
Are there items council members would like to pull for discussion? Councilmember Camus, 2.9. I have some requests to speak from the public. Councilmember Licardo.
Forgive me, Mayor. I'm trying to identify the item relating to the Las Gas Creek Bridge.
2.17, I believe.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Other items on the consent calendar? We have some requests to speak on the rest of the calendar. Aurelia Sanchez.
I'm here to speak about the sale of 551 Key Street. I have here an email from the president of the Spartan Keys, NAC, and he had some concerns about the sale of this property, and his basic concerns were, and I'll read a little bit of this. "I don't think this area is very suitable for development. Traffic flow is very difficult through there. Also, the formula that the planning department uses for parking forces many cars to be parked on the street. At present, with all the high-density housing on South 11th and 12th Street, there is no, there will not be any room for street parking should a new building be built there. Also, my own concerns is that this area really needs to be studied before it's built on, and I want to remind the council that if there's an affordable housing project built there, that would probably be the sixth one within my small neighborhood, which is Spartan Keys. My neighborhood is a very depressed area. We have a high crime rate. We have no open space and no services, especially now that the city has cut back on a lot of police staffing, code, and just all of the things that make a city run. So please, if you're going to build on this, please study it and be careful, because the quality of life of the residents is at stake. Thank you."
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to also pull this item, forgive the tardiness, 2.16.
Councilmember Licardo.
It is inappropriate to speak on an item that has not been formally polled, but Aurelia Sanchez just spoke on.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm happy to pull it if that would be helpful.
Well, let's, okay, let's pull 210 off, because that was, that was the item. So that leaves 29, 210, 216, 217. We'll take separately, is there a motion on the balance? We have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. On that motion, all in favor, opposed, non-opposed. That's approved. Let's take up 2.9, then. Councilmember Camus wanted to pull that one.
Yeah, I mainly had questions with, with the amount of money that we're losing on this deal. It seems like it was purchased in a time when the market was a little higher than it was, it is today, but we're looking like losing a million dollars, more than 30 percent, on what we invested into this property. I don't know who can comment on it. I don't know, I understand that you did an estimate how much the land is valued at, but I wanted to see if... at, but I wanted to see if, if this, this property was, you know, put out to bid and see if we can get better offers. I mean, the market's starting to come back in the right direction.
Good afternoon, Nancy Klein, Economic Development and Real Estate, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On the Bascom property, the property was surplus, and we did put the property out for bid, and this was a bid amount which actually equals the appraisal, which was updated recently. So, the numbers are consistent with what market would bear today for the property.
Do you think that, you know, holding out for a few more months might get us a little higher? I know that real estate values are going up dramatically.
It's not likely in the next few months that any appreciable increase will occur. The general plan is neighborhood commercial, and after working with planning, that's the desired use, is to keep commercial on the frontage from a general plan perspective at this time. And likely in the next six months, we would not see an increased value on that property.
Thank you.
I have some requests to speak on 2.9. Randy Kenman and Frank Jesse.
On behalf of the neighborhoods, I want to apologize for not getting information to you earlier, but we weren't advised that we'd gotten this far down the stream on this project. 1015 Bascom represents the only public land nearby besides the Bascom Library and Community Center. The next closest piece of land is Frank Santana Park, according to the county's, I mean, the city's own website, which is miles away. The community's always been told a couple of things about this property. The first is, we'd always be in the loop. That didn't happen. And the other thing is that you can't sell it below market value, and in this case, you can't sell it below the amount of money that we took out of the library bond fund. So, this obviously represents a big hit to the bond fund, and there's no indication as to how we make that up. In addition, while it's currently zoned neighborhood commercial, it's part of the general plan update to change this to an urban village, which means high-density housing and mixed commercial use. With that, you're going to need parks and open space. This represents our only ability to hold on to a piece of property and entice that development. So, it makes no sense to sell property at a loss now, when you're going to have to turn around and negotiate with people to buy some other property at a higher price. The general consensus is, if we can hold future, if we can hold land for a future ballpark and call it investing in San Jose, if we can give money to developers through incentives elsewhere and call it investing in San Jose, if we can give discounts on park and infrastructure fees and call it investing in San Jose, we should be able to hold on to a piece of property that requires almost no maintenance and call that investing in San Jose. Thank you.
Frank Jesse?
Good afternoon, council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. So, thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, for myself to be able to address this item. My name is Frank Jesse. I'm Director of Real Estate and Facilities for Satellite Healthcare, and I'm anxious to make sure I address the questions that were just brought forward by some of the citizens, but let me first give you really briefly an introduction about ourselves. We're a not-for-profit dialysis renal care and related services provider, founded in 1974 by a Stanford University physician. We're headquartered in San Jose. We have a very strong history of patient-centric care and highly regarded by patients, physicians, and hospitals. We're a leader in research efforts to enhance the care of patients with renal disease. We look forward to developing a new facility to serve our patients and referring physicians with a quality clinic in proximity to a leading healthcare provider, the Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, in a location that's central to a large segment of our patients in the San Jose community. Our facilities typically are also a draw for, when patients come with their families, the families often then patronize and utilize the community, including any kind of retail in the area. The community center is very ideally situated as well to serve that. So, we're trying to bring a quality of life for these patients as part of, these are residents of San Jose who really need this amenity. The care is delivered in an outpatient clinic setting, which is very important, as the patients benefit from getting care outside of a hospital setting, with its attendant risks and in a supportive, less stressful environment. Nevertheless, they are near a major medical center in this location. We will be grateful for your support for acquisition of this site. We're invariably seen as a very good neighbor, because we place a high priority on quality facility that reflects the caliber of care we provide. Since our patients are very specifically scheduled, the traffic effect of our presence is minimized. We're generally seen as a low-traffic-impact health provider. We look forward to working closely with planning and the building department, as well as the community, as we plan this facility. That would be an important node in the providing of healthcare in the community. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilman Licardo? Madam Nishwin, Councilmember Constant?
Thanks. I have kind of a process question. How come sometimes real estate transactions just come to us, and other times we give direction on terms and conditions and get to see, kind of have some discussion about the intent and what we're looking for, getting out of a piece of property before we get into the sales, and other times they just show up like this?
Councilmember, the surplus sales process allows for the properties to be identified and approved by council, and that is council's notice. Then, council expects staff to come back with approved deals, or deals to approve. So, there are other extenuating circumstances that may not be surplus properties. Often, they are not, when they come with price and terms.
So, the key here is, we declared it surplus, and that's what allowed it to go through this process versus the other?
That's correct.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure where the difference was.
Councilwoman Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, I'm curious, and before Nancy scoots too far, part of, I'm sure, part of this analysis also is, if we go through the process of surplusing, and we identify it, and we get some bids, and the, let's just say hypothetically, as an example, the, the value of the land and the proposals are a good amount less than what we invested in the property. Is there a reassessment internally about, maybe we maintain and hold, to Councilmember Camus's point, hold this land for a bit longer, or even look maybe for a public use on the site, such as, of course, parks is usually the top item suggested? So, I guess what I'm looking for, more or less, is, is there a reassessment when we, when we look at the return on the investment that we're going to get?
Thank you very much, councilmember. There, there is a reassessment. There, there has been internal coordination. We have spoken with the Parks Department. This is not a site that they would have identified for purchase, nor do they have purchase dollars or renovation dollars or operational dollars to be associated with the site.
Let me, if I could also add, Councilmember Ed Chikata, Assistant City Manager, I have the benefit or the curse of longevity with the organization through the time at which the property was purchased, then, then property across the street purchased ultimately for the, for the branch library, and throughout that, those steps, direction given to proceed with surplusing this property, and then putting it out for sale, really happening during the bottoming, hopefully, we can say with some confidence, of the market. That said, there had also been some policy changes at the council throughout in the development and adoption of the new general plan. So, at the time that we purchased the property, it was actually, and I can say this with some confidence, appraised at multifamily residential use, and as such, a recognition that there was really, unfortunately, the height of the market, purchasing at, at the price associated with that multifamily residential use. So, at this point now, recognizing that new general plan does, would not reflect that, the, the current market valuations are what they are.
Sort of sharing some of that blessing and curse of having extended period at the city, I, you know, too often, in my opinion, we get put in a situation where what we invest, we don't get back, and we often lose. I'm really looking forward to that time where we come to council, and we're making a profit for once, and it's just, looking back over the years and years, it's more, it's just too rare, in my opinion, but it has nothing to do with this item, I guess, today. My last question to pose is, more or less, the issue that was raised here, making the library capital fund whole. Is that a requirement that we're, we need to do?
Yes.
And that's the general fund obligation I saw?
Well, the, the idea, these were issued with geo-bonds for library purposes, so the proceeds would need to be, if you sell it, would need to be used for library capital improvements. The purpose can only be for library purposes, as long as you hold the property. Parks hasn't indicated an interest in acquiring the property, and if we're going to use it for something else, and it's either general fund or some other source, it's going to have to reimburse the, the library capital funds.
And that said, if I could add also that, from a capital budget perspective, within the library program, that has, this has been accounted for, and there are sufficient funds for the completion of the library bond program.
In the last budget cycle, or you're done?
As, on an ongoing basis, as, as staff has been working on the bond program, there is one more branch to be completed, and sufficient funds have been reserved for that.
Thank you. Councilman Coler.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Camus, for pulling this item. I note that February 17, so over three years ago, there was an appraisal for the 2.31 million, and the appraiser essentially just said that confirms that that still holds today, so there's been, from essentially the lowest point, I think we could, we're close to it at the recession to now, and they still feel that it's the same value?
Yes, it was just recently confirmed for a commercial purpose on, on Bascom in that area.
And then, going to the, the question of the bond, of the original 3.472 the city paid for the land, that was out of the, that was out of the library's bond to secure it, just in case we decide that's where the library was going to go?
That's correct. It was the initial concept for just the community, the library alone.
Okay. Now, we, if we sell it for about a million dollars less, and the question was asked, I don't know if it was, or maybe I missed it or it wasn't directly answered, what about that extra million? Do we have to, in some ways, replenish the library bond from, or is, or we do not?
No, you're required to sell the property at fair market value. You have an appraisal, this is fair market value. That being said, you're, you're going to be paying debt service on that extra million, because you've issued bonds. But to replenish the funds, you are, you're only required to sell at fair market value and put the money back into the library capital fund.
So, the, the million dollars lost, it is a loss in, in the sense that we're going to have to pay debt service on a loss, essentially. And what was the consideration, if any, of, of holding out for the potential of property values increasing? And on the flip side, or on a separate note of, because the, and I don't know what the general, the general plan zoning here is appropriate for the, the healthcare use that's coming in, but are there other uses that could be of greater value, or potentially even rezoning that would be allowable for a greater value? Or is, you know, I, what was the process in terms of your assessment?
We, real estate staff coordinated with planning. There is a future desire for an urban village in the area. The conversation, the view is that the urban village probably won't come together for the next five to seven to 10 years. And then, in the meantime, having the commercial use on-site was deemed more appropriate than holding this, especially in light of council policy, which indicated to sell property where appropriate to, to meet other needs.
Okay. And so, your assessment was waiting five to seven years wasn't worth it, even to just to take the million-dollar loss to the bond fund? I understand it's not a loss to the general fund or anything. And what, if any, impact would that have on whatever the urban village is, that's planned for the area?
That, that can't be exactly foreseen at the time, but there would be the ability, and Joe will speak to that.
Yeah, Joe can speak to that, thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Coler, if you could repeat your question?
Just about, you know, the urban village is planned for the area, rather than holding off and waiting to see how this piece fits into the overall urban village plan for the area, the suggestion is to go ahead and sell it, and then it becomes this healthcare facility. And so, what is your perspective as to how that then can be integrated into what will be an urban village?
Sure. So, with the urban village, we do assume employment uses throughout the villages and approve those today without a village plan. So, the dialysis clinic or an office building on it, we would approve absolutely, with or without the village plan. So, it's really, the village plan becomes operative at the time of putting residential on the property, and since our goal really is employment, this is not going to preclude our ability to obtain employment uses.
Okay, so the fact this employment land is consistent, no matter what you do with the rest of the property, as you bring in more residential, this, you know, obviously we want to create employment lands, so the idea then is, as we go forward with the residential, you'll somehow blend this into the overall plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Councilwoman Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. For me, it's a little bit deja vu, because I pulled this off the consent calendar about five and a half years ago, when it was planned to be sold, and my reasoning was, the library across the street was not built. And what we have here is prior decisions, where we overbought land and we overspent, and now we're stuck with this parcel. And so, the council gave direction with many of the parcels in our city to sell them. And we put it on a process to sell this parcel, and I was contacted by both people that bid on it, at least two, and I said, "I can't talk to you about it. Just bid the highest bid you can make." And this is the highest bid we have for this period of time versus the time we bought it, and where we often in government pay highest and best-use price, versus, to Councilmember Rocha's point, when we sell it, we sell it at the market rate. So, we're sort of in a cleanup mode of having to take care of a parcel that we own. So, would I have liked to gotten, to received even more than we paid for it? Absolutely. But in the end, we're sort of on the obligation here to pay back this library bond for which it was originally purchased for. It was, so, here we are. So, in the end, it's gone through an RFP process, the council's given prior direction on the parcel. So, with that, we sort of have to do what we have to do based on prior decisions, so I'll just make a motion to approve item 2.9.
All right, we have a motion to approve of staff recommendations. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to pretty much say the same thing. We, actually, it was in the mayor's budget message back in 2009 that we actually gave authorization for staff to go ahead and sell what we deem as non-essential and underperforming city-owned properties. And I think that, even though, you know, we're losing about a million dollars off of this property, but the fact that the appraisal concurred with the market price of the property, I think it's the way to go. We have other inventories, I mean, we have other properties in the city's inventory at the moment, and I think that it, it's great to have someone come forward with this bid. I think it's, it's not great, but it's not bad. I think it's, it's something that we can live with, and I think it's just going to help this area. We're so glad to have the Bascom Library and Community Center open now, that this is just going to be in line with, you know, with the neighborhood out there, so thank you.
I think that concludes the discussion. We have a motion to recommendation on that motion, all in favor, opposed, non-opposed, motion is approved. Our next item is 2.10. Councilman Licardo wanted to talk about the property at 551 Key Street.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address the reasonable concerns that were raised by Ms. Sanchez. Certainly, we're going to undergo full public process before there's any development on this site. I know that this property, which has been affectionately referred to as the pit in the neighborhood, is, does face Key Street, which obviously is a very busy street. My understanding is, the buyer is interested in doing some mixed use, probably some combination of retail and residential. Before there is any proposal that is going to come to council, there will be community meetings, there will be outreach, and we'll have lots of, certainly lots of discussion, but this by no means predisposes or predetermines what that use is going to be. We're simply conducting the sale, and I appreciate Nancy Klein, her team's efforts, because I know that we gave you a mandate a few years ago to sell a lot of city property and do it quickly, because we've got to find ways to pay for police and libraries and lots of important services. So, I appreciate your efforts to do so in a way that, in this case, actually came in above the appraisal. So, thank you, Nancy, and I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve above the appraisal and above what we paid for it. Unfortunately, it's a small property, so there's not a big profit. Every little bit helps. On the motion, all in favor, opposed, non-opposed, that's approved. Item 2.16, Councilman Rocha wanted to talk about the California Emergency Management Agency.
Yeah, just a general question for anyone from PD, if that's not available, then airport. Maybe that's... And if neither is here, then maybe the city manager would be interested in following up for me?
We could pose the question, and we can get a response.
The question, generally speaking, is on the human trafficking issue. Reading through the memo and the reimbursements and where the dollars are going to be spent, I was thinking, that's my understanding, that there's a program somewhere, SFO, where some of that training is applied to the public safety officers that work at the airport to identify some of those issues there and maybe be responsive on that end. And I was going to ask staff if that's something that had been contemplated, I guess, as part of the grant monies and where those trainings are going to go within the PD.
Do we have one of our officers here?
Hello, I'm Sergeant Ockham, the commander of the Human Trafficking Task Force for the police department. This grant is specifically designated for equipment purchase and overtime for specific operations to combat human trafficking. It also subgrants out a portion of the money to community solutions for our NGOs.
And so, Councilmember, if there's any other follow-up during main to your question, we'll certainly get back to you.
With that, a move approval?
All right, we have a motion to approve on the motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, it's approved. 2.17, Councilmember Licerto, it's a master agreement regarding city trail projects.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there had been some concern in the community, and I just wanted to ask Dave Sykes or Eves Suti or anyone who might be able to respond to a question. Whoever... Thanks, Dave. It may well be Eves, but we're really, I know there's been a lot of concern out in the community about preserving the bridge and its historic aspects, and perhaps if you could just explain the rationale, because I know this is obviously a master agreement with CH2M Hill, doesn't directly address those issues, and obviously those addresses, those issues are sort of the elephant in the room around why to go forward with the proposed bridge rather than restoring the bridge that's there. Perhaps if you could speak to the environmental and maintenance issues?
He'll just start off and then hand it off to these guys. You're right, the agreement for force today is to move forward with the design of a new bridge. There was a pretty extensive analysis that went into deciding whether we were going to save the old trestle bridge or continue with a new design. And that process include review of the historic significance of the bridge, as well as maintenance considerations, and all of those things factored into our proposal to move forward with the new bridge.
We've been looking at the structure for a number of years. Back in 2004, we thought it was easy to acquire land from Union Pacific, so we were going to develop the trail as part of that, and that took quite a bit longer. But we worked through a federal process, which required us to do some analysis and environmental documents, and we got certification from the state of California that the trestle structure itself is not historic, and there was an assessment that most of the timbers were probably replaced in the last 30 to 40 years. That being the case, we still see the structure as having a lot of character and contributing to that sense of place. But we looked at the vandalism that had occurred, the inability to keep a structure like that operational throughout the year if it were to be the victim of vandalizing, of being vandalized, and also the challenges of having a structure within the channel and the environmental issues that presents.
Thank you.
I have one request to speak on this item, we'll take that now. Larry Ames.
I'm glad the city is moving forward on the Three Creeks Trail. A family wedding kept me from attending the first of the trail design public workshops, but I look forward to going to the other two meetings in May and July. Thus, it seems premature for you to rush to vote today on one of the key decisions as to whether to tear down this bridge or not. It's a hidden gem, it's just a few blocks from downtown Willow Glen, and is one of the main reasons that we in the community have worked so long and hard for this project. The trestle was prominently featured in all of our presentations that we gave to county parks, open space, and various state and county elected officials, which helped raise much of the, a lot of the funds that went to buy this project. The county commissioned a engineering analysis, and it's very detailed, I've actually read it, I'm a physicist, I do engineering reading, and it goes into great detail about how it can easily be adapted for this thing. You just remove the train truss, the ties, and put concrete slabs on top. A few of the truss, the struts do need to be replaced, and some of the bolts, it's all very carefully documented in that document. The environmental impact of making these minor repairs is small compared to that of digging up the whole thing and getting it out of the creek there. The report also finds that restoring the trestle is about two-thirds the cost of replacing it with a new bridge. And even when you include inspection, maintenance, and repairs over a 40-year lifetime, the total cost for the existing trestle is still less than the cost of the replacement. A steel bridge could be nice, it would look just like any of the other steel bridges in the area there. We have one on the Coyote Creek at Shanday Oaks, we have one at Guadalupe, we have one over the Los Gatos at Blackford. But this trestle is unique, it's, you can't buy it from a catalog, they don't make them like this anymore. So before we decide the fate of trestle, please let us in the community complete the public design process. Also, bring it to the Parks Commission, there's a historic commission, all these people should weigh in on it. The trestle is a reminder San Jose's past, it has withstood fire and rain since before Willow Glen became a town, so please don't rush to tear it down now. Thank you.
That includes public testimony. Councilmember Verlo Verio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. We voted unanimously on this last week to move forward with a new bridge. The reason being is we had a very large engineering study that had taken a long time to do, and the analysis of our staff said, for all the measures put together, we recommend building a new bridge. And with that said, this is now awarding the actual contract to do it. The times that construction can take place are limited because it is the creek and we have to get the permits, I believe, from federal... Eves? Is that federal or state that we get the approval of when we can build?
We would be within state and federal jurisdiction, they both have an influence on the season.
And Larry is a, obviously, a longtime trail advocate, and we appreciate all the past endeavors. But last week, we came here and we had the Save Our Trails organization, which supported the new bridge as well, and I think it's just a matter of the, you know, the level of detail, and if the council wants to do a study session on this one bridge and do the pros and cons of new versus old and tackle that engineering report, could certainly do that. But at some points in time, the staff recommendation, fully in depth with a public works engineering study and the, you know, whether it's termites on the existing pillars, or it's a bridge being lit on fire from a homeless encampment down in the middle of the creek, there are a variety of issues here. But a new bridge done now will provide the connection much faster from the land we own to the existing trail that starts again on a street called Lones. We don't have a map here. So with that said, we voted on this last week, this is just to award the contract. I'm going to continue to support the staff recommendation, so I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve a staff recommendation. On the motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, the motion is approved. Before we move off the consent calendar, I forgot to ask if there was a travel report. Councilmember Constant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report that last week, the League of California Cities had their policy committee meetings in, where were we? Pasadena. And I had the opportunity to go down, a quick round trip, went there in the morning, went to a meeting for about two and a half hours and came back, served as the vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, and will continue to work throughout the year.
You hear the travel reports, Councilmember Herrera.
I also attended the meeting in Pasadena and serve as the vice chair of the Transportation Committee.
Mr. Campos.
I also attended the meeting in Pasadena, and yesterday in our TNE meeting, Councilmember Herrera had asked for Betsy to watch Assembly Bill, oh geez, it's a, it's a Leno Bill.
1194.
1194, which deals with our Safe Roots to School program. We have shown a lot of success with that, and it's very important to our city, and I think at some point, we as a, we as a council should figure, figure out whether or not we want to, you know, provide some feedback to Sacramento on that. As well as, a couple of weeks ago, I went on a scholarship to the WELL Conference in Los Angeles. WELL stands for Water Education for Latino Leaders. And one of the things that, again, we, I would, I would ask for Betsy to give us feedback is on the water bill. It's a very important matter, most of the time, nine times out of 10, most people don't think about the importance of the delta, and the whole state is fighting over water rights there. We get 55% of our water from delta water, and, you know, we should be getting some, some feedback from Betsy and our lobbyists in Sacramento on what role our city should be taking, because right now, Southern California is taking a large role, and, you know, the interests in Southern Cal might not be the interest of the rest of the state, or it could be the interest of the rest of the state, but all three regions need to be working together on this. So that's my report, thank you.
Councilmember Herrera.
Maybe he can chime in on this too, because he was also at the meeting, or Councilmember Campos, but one good piece of news was that, out of the budget, we, the state will be starting to pay back that wall of debt, which includes, I believe it was 1.5 billion that had been liberated from cities, will come back to us, so we can at least look forward to one piece of good information, good news, that that money will be coming back to us.
I'll just add, I'm not holding my breath.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. Also attended the community meeting in Pasadena, the LCC Housing Community Economic Development Community Meeting. One of the three votes that we took there is to vote it down to support of AB5, which show up at 2.27 in our consent calendar today.
Councilmember Herrera. Okay. I think that's it on the travel report, so that concludes the consent calendar. Our next item of business is item 6.1, ground leasing operating agreements at West Side of the Airport, proposed staff recommendation to award to Signature Flight Support. Let me describe how we'll handle the hearings. We're going to have two parts to this. First, we have an appeal, which is item 6.1A. It's an appeal by Atlantic Aviation. And depending upon what the council does with the appeal, then we'll move on to item 6.1B, which has a whole bunch of parts about leases and terms and conditions on the project. So the appeal is about the Atlantic Aviation appeal. It's not about the rest of the project, so if I guide you to just wait until we get to the rest of what's going on, you'll realize why, because we're going to take up the appeal, have the hearing, we'll deal with this as we do administrative hearings, which is, we'll get the appellant five minutes so they can have a presentation to make, then we'll hear from the staff, any comments or responses they have, and then we'll take public testimony on the appeal. Then the council will make a decision, and then we'll come back to the leases and the other parts of the RFP. So with that, I would like to let the appellant have five minutes, I'm not sure who's going to take the lead for the appellant, appears to be Ash Paria.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Ash Pariau, I'm a partner with the law firm of Rutan and Tucker, LLP in Palo Alto. I represent Atlantic Aviation relating to its appeal of the City of San Jose rejection of Atlantic's bid protests made pursuant to the city's request for a proposal called for general aviation aeronautical services facilities at the San Jose International Airport, the project as being non-responsive. I would like to respectfully request that all the correspondence from my office and attachments be included in administrative record for this item, including our appeal letter and SEQA letter filed with the city clerk and the city council by email yesterday and overnight delivery today, including those emails today that were received this afternoon by you before this hearing. Relating to our bid appeal, simply put, the city did not follow its own procedures nor applicable law during the RFP process. Specifically, the city rejected proposals submitted by Atlantic and Ross Aviation as being quote-unquote "non-responsive," yet ignored serious material flaws in Signature's proposal when it determined that Signature's proposal was quote-unquote "the only responsive proposal." Signature's proposal must be rejected because of the following defects. One, Signature improperly contacted the city during the RFP's no-contact period. Two, to the best of Atlantic's knowledge, Signature's proposal does not conform to the exemplar agreement, which was a very important item in the RFP. Number three, Signature's proposed term is non-responsive. Number four, Signature did not provide adequate banking references pursuant to the strict RFP standards. Number five, Signature's cover letter exceeded the page limit. By overlooking these five categories discussed above, the city not only accepted a non-responsive bid contrary to its own requirements, but the city treated both Atlantic and Ross much differently than it treated Signature, giving Signature a distinct and unequivocal competitive advantage. Such action violates well-settled case law, the city's own requirements, and even the city's attorney's own analysis concerning this very project. As a result, for the reasons detailed in our letter and the exhibits, the city's decision to reject the proposal submitted by Atlantic is non-responsive, yet at the same time, accept Signature's similarly non-responsive proposal is arbitrary and capricious. For the record, and in order to exhaust Atlantic's administrative remedies before this body, Atlantic respectfully requests the following distinct actions. One, the city council overturned the protest hearing's determinations that Atlantic's proposal was non-responsive, exercised its discretion to waive irregularities in Atlantic's proposal, and authorized the city manager to negotiate and execute agreements with Atlantic concerning the project, ground leases and operating agreements, as city staff has asked you to do and recommended with Signature, notwithstanding Signature's non-responsive proposal. Two, alternatively, if the city council upholds the city's objection, excuse me, upholds the city's staff's rejection of Atlantic's proposal as being non-responsive, Atlantic respectfully requests that the city council reject Signature's proposal on the same grounds. We are before you on the basis of one simple thing, if you're going to apply the rules to them, you should apply them to them as you apply them to us. If you find something to be not irregular in our RFP, and you find the same in their RFP, you should reject them as non-responsive as you reject ours. I'd like to just spend the remaining moments I have talking about our SEQA documents. In our letter and attachments, we make it clear that the city may not legally approve staff's recommendations to move forward with the project without first conducting the planning, safety, and environmental review processes required by the California law and the city's own municipal code. There's a couple of points I'd like to make here. One, the project is inconsistent with the adopted master plan. The master plan should be comprehensively updated to address the configuration of the West Side Airport. Two, the necessary changes to the master plan require a major amendment. Three, the city may not approve the project without complying with SEQA. You cannot defer further SEQA analysis until after approving this project. It is not approve the project, plan later, it should be planned first, approve the project later. Number three, the city forbids, the SEQA forbids the city from segmenting its consideration of the impacts of the construction of the FBO from the remaining actions the city is taking on the west side. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, the project will have significant adverse environmental impacts, safety impacts, that have not been studied or mitigated by the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let me just clarify what I may have confused people with earlier in terms of the hearing. So that's the appellant's presentation, we'll let staff have a chance to respond, but I'm going to take public testimony on whatever people want to speak on, whether it's the appeal or the substance, but we will act separately first on the appeal and then the substance before we get into council discussion, because it's difficult for people to sort out the appeal versus the substance, and we'll just have one hearing. So, thank you, that was your five minutes. We'll give staff an opportunity to respond on the, on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Bill Sherry, Director of Aviation for the City of San Jose. To my left is Dave Moss, Deputy Director of Planning and Development for the airport, and to his left is Kevin Fisher, Deputy City Attorney. Atlantic, in its appeal, does not refute the specific reasons their proposal was determined to be non-responsive. After careful evaluation of Atlantic's proposal, it was determined that Atlantic's proposal did not, repeat, did not meet the minimum qualification requirements in nine areas. They failed to provide a proposal bond, which was a requirement. They did not provide adequate financial references, there was no pro forma, there was no management plan, no rent proposal. There was no management plan, no rent proposal, no property, sales, or use tax proposal, and no labor peace agreement. Based upon the above, it was determined by staff that the proposal did not meet the minimum requirements of the proposal. Consequently, Atlantic appealed it on an administrative appeal, and that appeal was upheld. I think it is appropriate for us to address Atlantic's concerns regarding the Signature proposal. So I'll turn that over to Dave and Kevin to address each of the five specific areas.
David Moss, Deputy Director with Airport Planning and Development. I'll go ahead through each of the assertions, one by one, and provide staff response. The first assertion was that Signature improperly contacted the city during the no-contact period. Actually, all the contact during the proposal period was through the designated contact that we had set out in the RFP. And in addition, the RFP allows the city to contact proposers to seek additional information. So in this case, we are seeking information from them, them not contacting us. As an example, the Atlantic appeal references two emails that I'll just draw your attention to. One is referenced in Exhibit Eight, where it discusses that contract was made through the designated, contact was through the designated hearing officer on the clarification that they sought. The second was in Exhibit Eleven. There's an email summary of what the proposals that were received to the Director of Aviation. And there was no contact with any of the proposers in generating that. Assertion two is that the Signature proposal is not consistent with the city's exemplar agreement. Our response is that proposers are not required to submit signed agreements with the RFP, which is an assertion they made. And in addition, Part Seven, Section C, on page twenty-seven of the RFP, specifically states that respondents will execute the exemplar agreement in substantially the form attached to the RFP, and the final agreement will be revised to incorporate the pertinent criteria contained in the successful respondents' proposal. Assertion three is that the Signature proposal lease term is non-responsive because they proposed a fifty-year lease. Exhibit H in the RFP is a facility investment schedule that shows investments greater than twenty-four point, twenty-five-point-four million dollars are negotiable, demonstrating that leases longer than thirty years are allowed. And in Part Six, Section F2, it states specifically that the maximum lease term is fifty years. Assertion four is that Signature did not provide the two financial references required. Signature provided letters from Bank of America, SunTrust, and Citibank in conformance with the requirements that are set out in Exhibit J, which is a listing of the pass/fail criteria of documents that are required. And lastly, assertion five is that Signature's cover letter, which was three pages, exceeded the limit stated in the RFP. The RFP actually allows up to four pages, as is shown on Part Six, Section A, on page fifteen of the amended RFP.
Based on the foregoing, Mayor, it's our recommendation, staff's recommendation, that the council uphold staff's determination that the Atlantic proposal was non-responsive.
All right. We have some folks who want to speak on this. We'll take them at this time, and it is on the appeal and the substance, whatever people wish to speak about. Please come on down when I call your name. And former mayors, get to go first. Ron Gonzalez. It's a little-known rule. He'll be followed by James May, Maria Sastra.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. And with today's appearance, I can say, now that I've spoken on both sides of the podium, but I can tell you, everything looks better from this side. I just want to come forward for just a second and lend my support and the support of the Hispanic Foundation of Silicon Valley for Signature Flight Support's application before you today. As someone who's been on that side of the podium, I can fully appreciate this project's benefit, not just to our city, but the entire Silicon Valley region. Signature's project truly has it all: economic benefits, extraordinarily well-run company with a great track record, new jobs, and a marquee partner for our city's airport, including also holdings with the principles of Google, and what I've seen particularly struck by, their sincere interest in investment in Blue City Holdings. They are already partnering with key community groups, proving that they understand the importance of corporate citizenship, including, of course, the Hispanic Foundation, but also the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, the Tech Museum, Goodwill Industries, the Chamber of Commerce, and numerous others. And I think that's quite impressive for a new company. In closing, a vote for Signature Signals and Investment, not just for now, but also for San Jose's future. Thank you.
James May, Maria Sastra, Benachang.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is James May, and I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Board of Directors of Atlantic Aviation. I'd like to clarify two things that have kind of been reported in the last few days. First of all, we, Atlantic, are not anti-Google. We welcome them, as we would any other aviation user to San Jose. Such corporate hangar development is, in fact, what we have been advocating with the airport for the last three years. But that does not mean that in doing so, we would recommend ignoring planning and safety considerations and waiving minimum standards. Between Atlantic, Signature, and the airport, I'm quite sure that we can come to some arrangements to take care of Google's every need without violating these procedures that are in place to take, ensure the safety of every airport user. Atlantic would be prepared to work with either Signature or the airport in whatever capacity is necessary. We could make facilities available, and we could operate at costs such that we can take care of an important, prestigious aviation user whilst making sure that we ensure the safety of the people working on the airport. Secondly, I'd like to make the point that we are not in the do-nothing camp. We have been advocating the airport to make a decision about runway eleven-twenty-nine for three years. We now face the real possibility, with this issue open, that we could lose more than fifty percent of our ramp space, which, as you can see from this picture, would severely devastate our business. At this point, Atlantic must take all actions to protect itself against what would be a devastating blow to its business. And frankly, this is a surprising way to treat the San Jose Jet Center and ACA Aviation, who have been good-standing tenants of the airport for over twenty years.
Benachang, Maria Sastra, Amina Halim.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Benachang with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. As you all know, the Leadership Group is a public policy trade association that represents more than three-hundred-and-eighty companies here in Silicon Valley. We're here today to support Signature Flight Support's application for the West Side development. As you know, the Leadership Group is a strong supporter of increasing choices at the San Jose Airport. Our CEO's members prefer the ease and convenience of flying out of San Jose, as opposed to our neighbor to the north. And the West Side development is a great opportunity to expand these options. We're very excited about Signature's proposal and the investment that they're making in our community, and we urge you to support their application today. Thank you.
Maria Sastra, Amina Halim, Andrew Faber.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Reed, and thank you to all the council members here today. On behalf of Signature Flight Support, we're very excited about the opportunity to go through with this exceptional project, an important project here at the Norman Mineta San Jose International Airport. As all of you know, our proposal for an eighty-two-million-dollar investment in this airport is the most comprehensive and largest investment of its kind in a single FBO in North America over the last thirty years. And we recognize the importance of this proposal in San Jose, as well as the importance of the job creation that it will stimulate, improving the tax revenue base of this community, as well as the community engagement that we'll have in the years to come. Signature continues to be very committed to this program and for the site development that comes with it. And we're delighted that our partner, Blue City Holdings, here today with us, is as well as excited about this opportunity. We're going to be part of this community. We look forward to it. There is a hundred-and-fifteen locations throughout Signature's network, and we're proud to say that this, hopefully, with your support, will be the one-hundred-and-sixteenth location on Signature's map. So on behalf of Signature, we appreciate the confidence you've had in us, the recommendation that airport staff, as well as many of you, have given in support of this project to go forward. And we look forward to working with you in the months and years ahead to see its successful execution in San Jose. Thank you.
Amina Halim, Andrew Faber, and Dale Larson.
Good afternoon. I am the sole owner of Jettfinity, a female minority-owned small business that has been providing catering to the business aviation in the Bay Area for the last fourteen years. Given that our sole focus is business aviation, there is little opportunity for my business to add jobs and increase economic opportunity without the introduction of new airports like the one being considered today. If approved, the increased services we would provide to the airport will potentially create a dozen jobs on the catering side alone, and increase economic opportunity for service workers in the area. I give my full support for the approval of Signature Flight Support's construction of this proposed airport. Thank you.
Andrew Faber, Dale Larson, Carl Cardino.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Andrew Faber. We've been working with Signature, who has this outstanding proposal in front of you. And it's disappointing that an economic competitor would raise a kind of legalistic, technical, and SEQUA issues that they have. We're really only here to tell you that if they take every action necessary, as Mr. May mentioned, we are prepared to work with the city, defending any approval that you may give, and would look forward to working with the city in that regard. Thank you.
Dale Larson, Carl Cardino, Glenn Falcon.
Thank you, Mayor Reed and council members. This may seem a little bit tangential, but I woke this morning, I'm a professor at Santa Clara University, and I study stress and health, but mainly I'm speaking as a public citizen who lives just outside the flight path coming into the airport. When I read the Mercury this morning, I saw the article, and I was a little bit alarmed that no mention was made of the curfew. Now, as someone who's lived in San Jose for thirty years, and each morning at six-thirty, I thank all of you for defending the curfew, but at six-thirty in the morning, my house does shake a little bit. And I'm just struck by the fact that this is not even in the conversation, that we are, it's about who's vying to get the airplanes in for Google. I did Google airport noise on the way over, and they have that right because it said "airport curfew, San Jose." So I just want to bring to your attention the fact that the health implications of this need to be really considered. I reviewed some of the scientific evidence a while ago, and there are real consequences, and these nighttime flights are going to make a difference. And you can't dismiss it just because of the low decibel ratings for these airplanes. And I understand the need to get funds. I understand the airport's in the wrong position, you know, location. It's always been there. But I also think that we have to pay attention to the people of San Jose, and the people who are going to be most affected are the people with less, with least voice in our community. And I think that if you're not going to have a thorough discussion of the health implications of this, we're really overriding something that we can't, which is the health of our citizens. So, thank you very much.
Glenn Falcon, Jim Reed, Ed Hodges.
Good afternoon. I'm Glenn Falcon. I've been with San Jose State Aviation thirty-seven years. A few years ago, we ended our fifty-year relationship with Mineta. We had a long-term lease there. Our campus was there. I hate to tell you, we paid two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a year fixed rate over those last fifty years. We're now over at Reed Hillview, and we see the development as proposed as giving a great opportunity to our students to regain presence at San Jose: jobs, internships, and real-world experience, and would welcome any development over on that side of the airport. Thank you.
Jim Reed, Ed Hodges, Tony Burke.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name's Jim Reed with the San Jose-Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Public Policy VP, and the chamber is strongly in favor of Signature Flight Support's proposal. You all probably know far better than most people how important that airport is, not only to the city, but to the entire region. Not only for the prosperity of our community in general, but for the needs of our high-tech community, our entrepreneurial class, venture capital, and so forth. And the report that you've got from staff, it seems to me, is very clear about some very significant definable benefits that we're going to get in terms of job creation, in terms of revenue to the city, and in terms of what this is going to mean for the airport and the community going forward. Separate from those statistics, though, if you just think about a couple of larger issues, what a great thing, at a time when California jobs are so under competition from Texas and other places, that we've got a proposal that actually is going to take jobs from Nevada and bring them to San Jose. What a great thing that we're going to have visitors coming to the Signature facility. They're going to experience a building designed by the world's leading operator, and they're going to have a first-class experience on their very first impression of San Jose. What a great impression on those people. And above all, it seems to me, even if the numbers weren't as compelling as they are, what a tremendous thing that you've got somebody who's already proving they're a valuable community partner. They're reaching out to the Hispanic Foundation, to the bicycle groups, to City Team. They're already an engaged part of the community, and this hasn't even been approved. So it seems to me, we've got a dream proposal here from an ideal vendor, and we would respectfully urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Ed Hodges, Tony Burke, Carl Cardino.
I represent CAP, which is a group of citizens, volunteer operation, that's been around for twenty-four years. The city and airport need money to help pay for that new terminal. We all know that. The city has about a hundred acres of land on the West Side that's ready for development, and rent income from that hundred acres is a good thing. Signature Aircraft wants exclusive use of thirty acres, I believe there's no dispute about that, for mainly corporate jets to be housed in those hangars, Google being one of the major customers. Signature wants an exemption to the curfew agreement that was approved by this council in two thousand and seven. They will argue, by the way, that agreement was just made public yesterday. I have the document here with the date on it. The, all right, the Signature will argue that twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine is adequate to control these violations. So CAP, last year, went up to the eleventh floor of the main building over there, and with the courtesy of the city, we looked at some documents to study the violations of curfew for the year two thousand and nine. We found there were a thousand violations for various reasons. And of those thousand, only two led to a fine. The other nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight were excused for various reasons. Now, the five neighborhood associations surrounding the airport want to protect their nighttime quiet by providing or maintaining this curfew. My group, CAP, is the airport watchdog group that belonged, that I belong to for twenty-four years, and it was founded by a retired mayor, Janet Grayhaze, and her husband, Ken. Unfortunately, some of you aren't aware that Ken's in the hospital now with some serious lung problems.
Sorry, your time is up.
Can I finish my last statement? My, complete my statement?
Sure. One sentence.
You, the city council, should postpone your vote on Signature's contract until SEQUA lawsuit that was filed by our group runs its course. Thank you.
Tony Burke, Carl Cardino, Ken Ambrose.
I'm Tony Burke with City Year San Jose, Silicon Valley. I'm here representing seven schools and thirty-six-hundred students that we serve in the Alamo Rock District. I'm here to tell you that we would not be able to do the work that we do every day, adding ninety days to the calendar year for our thirty-six-hundred students, without the support of corporate citizen leaders like Signature Flight Support. Moving their western offices here to San Jose is an exciting opportunity for us, to engage them, to engage their employees in project-based learning with our students. to engage their employees in project-based learning with our students. Moreover, their commitment to volunteerism, service, and youth development is core values of their corporation, not just in the short term, but in the long term. Their investment here couples that and echoes that because it's a long-term investment for us, so that we're not serving just 3,600 students, but the 25,000 students that need us. I hope you take all of this into consideration as you look to make a vote today, because we need more corporate leaders like Signature Flight Support sooner than later. Thank you.
Carl Cardino, Ken Ambrose, Dick King.
Mayor Reed and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak before you today as you consider the support of an award for a ground lease and operating agreement to Signature Flight Support. I was actually driving to another meeting in Sunnyvale when I heard that the California Environmental Quality Act was being used as grounds at the last minute as you consider this today. As you know, in addition to my role as CEO of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, I am co-chairing a statewide effort to make sure this great law, the California Environmental Quality Act, is no longer greatly abused, often for non-environmental purposes. All too often, companies versus companies use CQ as a tool when they've lost in the marketplace, instead of winning in the marketplace, trying to delay and derail sound developments in court. That's why I turned my vehicle around and came here today. I hope you will look at this for what it is. When you lose in the marketplace, that can be disappointing. Let's not drag a great law into the process. I look at Councilmember Campos and what he has endured in his district at Mo's Gas with a gas station across the street suing a sole proprietor costing $500,000 in CQ attorney fees to that sole proprietor. Your county, your city attorney can tell you what it's cost the city as a lead agency. This is what has to stop. You can reinforce that today by approving this project and moving forward with Signature Flight Support. Mayor, council, thank you for your time.
Ken Ambrose, Dick King, Mike Fox.
Mayor Reed, council members, I'm Ken Ambrose, president of Blue City. We're very proud of partnering with Signature, have worked hand-in-hand with them, assembling the best architects and engineers and consultants in the country. We're extremely proud of the result of this collaboration. This is going to be probably the finest facility in the country. We urge your support. We look forward to moving our fleet here.
Dick King, Mike Fox, and then somebody, I don't have a name, but they go at Clean Air. There's an email address. Dick.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. I'm Dick King. I'm the co-founder and director of sponsorships of the Tech Awards at the Tech Museum. I'm representing the Tech's president, Tim Ritchie, today. There are three reasons the Tech urges you to approve Signature Flight Support's proposal. Number one, we're very excited at the opportunity to collaborate with Signature Flight Support to develop and install high-tech, interactive exhibits in their new terminal. They didn't have to include any visitor experiences in the terminal, and certainly didn't have to choose us. We're honored to work with them and look forward to inspiring their visitors when they visit the capital of Silicon Valley. Number two, Signature Flight Support's outreach to us comes at a perfect time. As many of you know, we are in the midst of a $50 million capital campaign to renovate and upgrade all the exhibit galleries in the museum. So there is some urgency to start the process now with Signature Flight Support so it coordinates with our other exhibit efforts. And number three, Signature Flight Support has already demonstrated their philanthropic support by making a generous initial gift to the Tech and indicating that they wish to build a long-term philanthropic relationship. We strongly urge you to support their proposal. Thanks.
Mike Fox, Clean Air, Chris Toulon.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Mike Fox and president and CEO of Goodwill Silicon Valley. As you know, Goodwill of Silicon Valley works to create self-sufficiency of individuals through training, support, and career development. In that vein, Signature Flight Support is tangibly demonstrating they will impact San Jose's job market with additional jobs they'll bring, not only with their new facility, but also by relocating their headquarters here. This, of course, aligns them with Goodwill's goals and creates more job opportunities for individuals in our community. It creates additional economic activity and provides for increased city revenue. I am personally impressed with Signature Flight Support's seamless immersion in the Silicon Valley community and supportive organizations like Goodwill. Their regional vice president, Eric Hefela, has made a personal effort to get to know me and learn about Goodwill. As a board member of Team San Jose, I believe Signature Flight Support will be a great ambassador of both Mineta San Jose International Airport and Silicon Valley. They are community-oriented and have a strong record of supporting the communities in which they are located. I strongly urge you to support Signature Flight's plan. Thank you.
Clean Air S.J., Chris Toulon, Martin Dilson.
Yes, hi. Thank you, council and Mayor Reed. This is Tessa Woodman-C. And I'm here to discuss the fact that, you know, there is a conflict of interest of having the city of San Jose be a business that is supporting the airport. Because as a green city, it's the least amount of energy we should be putting into the high fossil fuel use that happens from airports. And so it's not a very good, really a good green city decision to develop our airport. And of course, we have the issues of the nighttime operation and the noise. And that's really a problem with us, like my friend was saying, especially when the airport and when the weather is bad and the airlines go north or south towards our neighborhoods. It makes it much worse in the Garden Alameda. But the real issue that I see is like, we're most probably going to go for this solution, I imagine, because as a business, this is how things happen. So I'm looking at mitigations and how we can have mitigations on the ground. Because when we don't have noise ordinances, like we don't have a strong noise ordinance here in the city of San Jose, we have a lot of problems on our land. And maybe we can use that as a balance to the problems that are going to happen when you possibly, you know, pass this ordinance to develop that west side. So what we're asking in our neighborhood is for noise controls and pollution controls on the ground so that we can be working at that level. And we see Stockton Avenue actually as the entryway from the billion-dollar airport to our Whole Foods, to our downtown, and how to create Stockton Avenue to be a state-of-the-art neighborhood that has noise controls in its backup beepers and pollution controls. So we need pollution controls on Stockton Avenue, and we need noise controls. And this is the mitigations we're asking for in our neighborhood so that when we build these urban villages that connect our residential and commercial, we can have a more sustainable neighborhoods. So we're just asking that in light of this development to at least deal with the issues in our neighborhood so we have more sustainable neighborhoods overall. So, thank you.
Chris Toulon, Martin Dilson.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Toulon. I'm a resident of the College Park neighborhood, which is bound on the north by 880, on the west by the Alameda, on the east by the railroad tracks, and on the south by Taylor Street. So as you can see, we're very close to the airport. Many of our residents were there long before the airport expansion. In fact, our neighborhood was there long before there was an airport. And now we are going to be very impacted by the private airport expansion on the west side. I came here today because my neighborhood has seen and heard an increase of small, low-flying aircraft directly over our homes, and very low-flying. I can only imagine what this will be like with 5,000 more flights annually. And add to this the already deafening noise of the commercial airlines, the freeways, and trains that we are surrounded by. I am not against growth. But I do demand that this be done with the highest consideration to us, the taxpaying citizens. Curfews must be strictly enforced. We live today with many violations to this curfew, although very many or very few are fined, we hear. Large commercial air jets, pro hockey, wait till the 49ers come. We have the corporate jets that include paying any fine is just the cost of doing business. Certainly, 90 decibels of noise at 1:30 in the morning is loud. What I'm asking you to demand is good neighbor policies for noise, curfews, pollution that are created and substantiated by current and updated plans and good neighbor groups to monitor this on an ongoing basis. I request the council to not remove the requirement of the additional curfew provisions in the Signature lease. We, the residents, need quality of life.
Martin Dilson.
Martin Dilson, our resident. And I'm here with an objection to the process that was used in bringing this before council. In looking at the agenda, there's not a word in this. Reading it would seem that it's an argument between Signature and Atlantic, and there's an issue of a lease. And there's not a word in the agenda, nor in the supporting documents, nor in the mayor's letter about any noise issue, not a hint about a curfew issue. It's wrong to bring this before yourselves at 3 o'clock or 3:15 in the afternoon when the neighbors can't come, when there's no indication in your official papers about the essence of it as far as the neighborhood is concerned. And also, no analysis. What, where is an impact report? If this is a CQ issue, what is the effect going to be? There's nothing for us to look at. And neighbors in general don't have an opportunity to come and express themselves. You're not treating the neighborhoods right in the way you're handling this. Thank you.
That includes the public testimony. We'll now take up the council deliberation and take a vote on the appeal matter. We will have, if the council decides to move ahead, if the council denies the appeal, then we'll come back and have some additional staff presentation on the proposal from Signature. But the discussion now is strictly about the appeal. So council members, we'll come back to some of the other issues that I know that people have questions about. And I'd like to just start with a couple of comments on the appeal. It's always good, I think, to go back and try to figure out what you were trying to accomplish a year ago when the council gave direction to go out with an RFP. And so I went to the RFP. And there's a summary, Part 1 under Opportunity of Summary. "The City of San Jose Seeks Proposals." Okay? The RFP is a Request for Proposals. "For Development and Operation of Aeronautical Services Facilities to Serve General Aviation Activities at the Norman Way Mineta San Jose International Airport." That's what we were trying to accomplish. That's what we wanted. Question is, what did we get from Atlantic Aviation? So I went back and looked at the actual documents submitted by Atlantic Aviation. And they made a proposal, but it wasn't a proposal to develop facilities. They proposed to pay money for five-year options to develop the west side of the airport. Should Atlantic wish to develop the land, it would do so in parcels of the site agreed with the airport and commit to development capital. So theirs is not a proposal for development. It's no different than if we were trying to get police cars for our police department. We went out for a proposal for vehicles, and somebody came back and said, "We don't think you ought to have cars. They should walk." And that's our proposal. It's not responsive to what we were trying to do. A year ago, the council decided we would put this out for proposal for development of aviation facilities within the limits of what the FAA might allow, within the limits of what the master plan would allow. And we got back some documents, some proposals. It's clear the Atlantic Aviation proposal was not a proposal to do development. And as staff has pointed out, and in the city attorney's memo, it outlines all of the specific elements that they did not include in their documents. But fundamentally, once you get past the beginning, you realize this isn't a proposal for development. And so it's not responsive to what we were trying to do, which is why the staff has recommended that we deny the appeal. But let's just say for a second that, okay, this really was a proposal for development. How would it score based on the criteria that we were using? And the staff used evaluation criteria, revenue to the airport, revenue to the general fund, quality of proposed facilities and capital investment, business and management plan, benefits to the local community. Five categories. If the Atlantic Aviation had been a proposal, it would score close to zero because there is no revenue to the general fund, no proposed facilities and capital investment, so the quality is zero, no business and management plan, so that would be zero, no benefits to the local community because there's no development, some revenue to the airport. So you get a few points for revenue to the airport, but it would certainly be far less than what was proposed by the other folks who responded. So I certainly see this as non-responsive. And with that, I would certainly support denying the appeal so that we could move ahead with the discussion of the possible lease. Councilmember Constant.
Well, I don't think I can add anything to that, so I'll just make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to deny on the floor. Councilmember Liccardo.
No, I was prepared to speak to the next motion.
Okay, Councilmember Herrera.
I think you summed it up very well, Mayor. And I look at this really as, Atlantic's proposal is more of a proposal to delay rather than to develop.
On the motion to deny the appeal, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, the appeal is denied. So that we can now take up the second item on the agenda, 6.1B, dealing with the possible lease and moving ahead with the negotiations with Signature Services. And I think staff would like to make a presentation about what we're considering.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, Bill Sherry, Director of Aviation for the City of San Jose. What I'd like to do to start with is go back to April 3, 2012, and highlight what council direction was to staff at that time. Your direction was to proceed with the development of the west side. Your instructions to us in crafting the RFP was to open up all 44 available acres on the west side for consideration to allow proposals of any use allowed under the airport master plan. You told us that proposers can propose any size and location of their choice. We should consider multiple uses, if complimentary. And in terms of scoring, number one should be revenue to the airport, and number two should be revenue to the general fund. Just to review, for those not familiar with the airport, the top of this aerial is west, the right is north of Santa Clara, and to the left is south downtown area. The two areas highlighted are the areas that we included in the RFP. The one on the right is the 44 acres. And then we decided, subsequent to the council discussion, to go ahead and throw the 15 acres in to see if we would get anything on that, which we did not. The process that we went through was very painstaking, but there was a tremendous amount of outreach. 336 interested stakeholders were contacted. All information discussed, both ways, to us and from us, was publicly available on the airport's website. Many, many public meetings were held regarding the RFP process, what we were seeking, and how it would be conducted. We advertised in relevant industry magazines. We had direct outreach to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, the Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the Northern California Business Aviation Association. We wanted to make sure we got it right the first time. And so we issued a draft RFP, put it out for comment, got 159 questions, and we responded to every one of them. We then put out the final RFP, got 194 additional questions, and responded to every one of them. We got three responses to the RFP. Atlantic Aviation, which proposed no facility, 32 acres, and no capital development, and you just upheld the non-responsive determination. Ross Aviation also was determined as non-responsive. They did appeal on an administrative basis, but did not appeal to council. They proposed a fixed-base operation, 15 acres, $25 million in capital development, but their proposal did not include a fuel farm, which was also a required element. Consequently, the only responsive bid that we had was from Signature Flight Support. They're proposing a fixed-base operation with a corporate subtenant, 29 acres, and $82 million of private capital development at the airport. We had a senior auditor screen the proposals against the minimum requirements set forth in the RFP. As I noted earlier, the Atlantic and Ross were to As I noted earlier, the Atlantic and Ross were determined non-responsive. Both appealed that process and that determination. A protest hearing officer in the Department of Finance evaluated the appeals and upheld the disqualification. The selection panel or evaluation panel consisted of five individuals. We tried to get as diverse a group as we can. We had the deputy CFO at the airport as one member, also the economic development director for the City of San Jose, the director, deputy director of operations for the airport. We asked an individual that had great expertise in FBO management at another airport to join us, as well as a private individual who was not conflicted. So this was the evaluation panel that evaluated the signature proposal. There were five areas consistent with council direction. The top two, revenue to the airport, had 400 available points, revenue to the general fund, 200 available points. And then the three other areas included the quality of the proposed facilities that were proposed, the business management plan, and the benefits to the local community. And each one of those had 150, the benefits to the community 100. So you had a total of 1,000 possible points. With the five people adding up their scores, they came to a total of 991 points, so it was considered to be a very responsible proposal. The proposed site is highlighted up in the top of this aerial on the 44 acres. The facilities include an executive terminal, 17,000 square feet, six hangars consisting of roughly 33,000 square feet, one large hangar of 66,000 square feet, so we have almost 100,000 square feet of hangar space, a fuel farm consisting of 80,000 gallons of Jet A and 15,000 of avgas. For those who aren't familiar with what that is, Jet A goes into jets, avgas goes into piston aircraft. There is 18.5 acres of aircraft parking ramp proposed. The ground service equipment will also have a shop, 6,200 square feet. The facilities are going to be designed for LEED gold standards. A taxiway connector has to be built to allow for connection to the airfield taxiway system and runway system, and 300 vehicle parking spaces will be built. This is the planned view of the proposed facilities, considered by airport staff as being high-quality development. Revenue to the airport and to the city, lease area consists of 29 acres. As I noted before, 82 million of private capital development. There is no city funding in this proposal. The rent to the airport is $2 per square foot, and it will be adjusted every five years by appraisal and every year by CPI. The term proposed is 50 years. The rent that the airport will receive is 2.6 million per year, plus a MAG, a minimum annual guarantee of 400,000 for the fuel flow, which, so the airport will receive $3 million per year. Mayor, on your map, that's 75 cents on the CPE. It will actually be slightly a little less than that, but roughly that's it on a rounded basis. To the city, there's a minimum annual guarantee of tax generation of 70,000 in year one escalating to 300,000 in year five for the general fund. The proposed services include pretty much just about everything you would expect from a high-quality FBO, including fueling, ground support, aircraft parking and tie-down, hangar storage, ground transportation services, catering, maintenance, and charter management. Economic impact, these are the benefits to the city. Estimated annual economic impact of 73 million. It will create 150 to 200 construction jobs during the construction period and 36 ongoing jobs thereafter. 370 direct and indirect jobs generated. Estimated annual personal income of 21.3 million, and again, no city investment in this proposed development. Community partnerships, probably most notable is with Blue City Holdings, which is a company representing the personal aircraft of the principals of Google. Annual, they're allocating 200,000 dedicated marketing to help promote the San Jose and the facility being constructed. Quite as an aside, Signature has decided to move its west coast headquarters to San Jose, so that's kind of a cherry on top of the cake. They have formed partnerships with the tech museum, so we're very anxious to see that partnership grow and develop. And the use of a hangar for 14 days during a disaster, and I can tell you as a former airport director from Florida who suffers through many, many hurricanes, the day when an earthquake hits this area, your airport is your main point of relief because that's where the Red Cross will fly in supplies. So having this can be quite advantageous should that disaster ever occur. As I noted previously, the facilities will be designed for LEED gold certification. Many different elements of green technology coming in, including alternative fuels for the ground service equipment, possible purchase power agreement for solar panels, alternative fuels for transportation options for customers, water-efficient landscaping, and the use of green power. Certainly, this facility will be a major step forward in forwarding the city's green Pictures are always a nice thing to include, so I've included a few pictures. This is an aerial view from landside. This is actually looking north northeast, looking in that direction. A landside view of the entrance of the proposed development. This is a rampside view, so this is actually looking west, northwest, in that direction. This is another aerial landside view. Customer lounge inside. Now, the one thing with the proposal is the land that was selected, it does leave one area undeveloped. So staff would like, with council sees fit, to authorize us to have delegated authority to negotiate and execute, to allow us to work with Signature, to adjust the lease boundaries. We think that there's opportunities where we can improve upon this layout, but we need that ability. Also, I think that's important as we coordinate with the FAA and city site plan requirements to allow us to be able to adjust the lease boundaries within the 44 acres shown above. So the recommendation, next steps, is deny the Atlantic appeal, which you just did. Delegate authority to the administration to negotiate and execute the lease with Signature. Delegate authority to the administration to adjust the lease boundary, as I previously noted. And then finally, delegate authority to the administration to negotiate and execute a non-disturbance agreement. This is an agreement that would be with Blue City Holdings, which protects them in the event of a Signature default throughout the 50-year lease. With that, Mayor, we stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be a few questions. I'd like to start with a few comments. First, this has been going on for maybe two or three years in my mind, ever since we realized how difficult it was going to be to increase the revenues to the airport to cover the debt service, and we created our airport competitiveness plan, which the council approved, and have done a lot of things over the last few years to control costs and increase revenues, and we're looking forward to Virgin America's launch of service come May 1st to LA. Great way to travel. ANA will be back with their flight to Tokyo. We just don't know the exact date. So we've worked really hard to get the revenues up through passenger traffic with additional flights, but it's not enough, and we need to do more. And the west side is a huge asset, potential opportunity to get millions of dollars a year in revenue, and that's why the council has pushed the staff forward to get this done, so that we can begin getting those revenues in time to begin to pay debt service, which are rising from $65 million in 2012 to $98 million in 2016. But what we've done over the years is I've talked with everybody out there, I think. I don't know if there's anybody that I've missed. I've had multiple meetings with Atlantic Aviation, HP Aviation, Avbase, Signature Flight Support, California Strategies, Canyon Snow Consulting, Blue City Holdings, and others that have an interest in the airport. And this west side is a huge asset and a huge opportunity for us. Unfortunately, some people are not going to be pleased with the direction, others will be, but we have to look out for the interests of the city and the interests of the city or in getting some revenues out of this, as well as providing additional services to our corporate community, and having Blue City Holdings in there obviously is a big plus. But it's certainly consistent with the airport master plan, which we approved over a decade ago, and this is actually quite a bit smaller footprint than noise print and everything else than we had anticipated when we approved the airport master plan. But we're building out a master plan. We have a plan. We have our airport competitiveness plan, and of course, we have our economic strategy. And all of these things are consistent, and what we're doing here carries out council direction. It's great to have a motivated proposer who's motivated to put their own money into the transaction that'll generate revenues for the city as well as the airport. I know it's taken a lot of work, the airport staff, the city attorney's office, finance, the city manager to get to this point, and so I'm anxious to move ahead. It's an excellent proposal, and I'm excited to see them break down and get underway, and I do want to emphasize the importance of working at the speed of business because we need to be able to deliver this project on a timeframe that makes sense for the proposer. But I think staff is prepared to do that. We've demonstrated over and over again that we can move quickly and work at the speed of business and get things done in an excellent manner. So I urge my colleagues to support the staff recommendation and move ahead with this interesting and exciting project. Councilmember Liccardo?
Thank you, Mayor, and I share your excitement. I wanted to first put a motion on the table, and then perhaps I could say a word or two. I'd like to move the memorandum dated April 5 from Mayor Reed, Councilmember Herrera, and myself with the following changes. First, we've already dealt with paragraph A, so I'll move on to paragraph B. Delete the words "and execute agreements" in the second line of paragraph B, and add paragraph F to return to council on April 16. That's next week evening session for discussion of language relating to the curfew, and provide authority to city manager to execute an agreement. That would be the motion.
Second?
I'd like to describe...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Councilman Liccardo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to describe rationale. First, I'd like to disclose I have also had contacts with Signature, Google, Blue City Holdings, and others, and I think all the folks that the mayor mentioned. I've also, this morning at 5:00 AM, received a couple dozen emails from residents who couldn't be here, who were concerned about rumors about potential changes to the curfew and so forth, and that is part of what motivates this amendment. I'm very enthusiastic about the opportunity presented by Signature. I think this is an extraordinary economic opportunity for the city, certainly, and Signature has already proven to be a great community partner, and I'm eager to move forward. The good news is nothing about this suggested direction will stall anything. My understanding is we're not in the critical path, given the fact that we're still negotiating the agreement. I know there's still site issues, as Bill laid out, and so there will be more negotiation to come, and this will enable us to have some discussion while that's being negotiated, and ultimately, I see, Mayor, we'll have authority to execute well in time to be able to move forward as planned. But as reflected in yesterday's memorandum from airport staff, we are seeing language emerge regarding the curfew, which varies from what is seen with regard to other fixed base tenants, as Atlantic as well as Avbase. And of course, has long been longstanding concern in the community about the curfew and our preservation of the curfew. And of course, we do need to assure tens of thousands of residents who live around the airport that they will get a good night's sleep. I think it's important to understand the context here, and I expect we will explain that in the coming week, particularly at the hearing next week, but the language that is being prepared by staff, as I understand, is really identical to what is already in place for our airlines. That is the same language, in fact, that CAP, Assistance Against Airport Pollution, advocated, we utilize when the airline renewal lease came before us. Nonetheless, I know memories are sometimes fade, and people sometimes do confuse what may have been with what is, and I want to make sure we have a full and fair discussion because we recognize these changes are somewhat late in emerging, and I think Martin Delson made a good point, that as you look at the agenda, certainly, you don't see anywhere on the agenda a discussion of curfew, and let's face it, for lots of residents who live in Councilmember Rivera's district and my district, that is a very significant concern. So I'd like to be able to at least have this issue vetted. I am confident that this development lies well within the contours of the noise and vibration impacts that were studied and cleared by our EIR and by our amended EIR, and I certainly have no intention of aiding and abetting any sequoia abuse by one competitor against another. I think it is simply important that if we're going to have a change, and we're going to have a change at the last minute, at least explain it so the public understands exactly what's going on. So I am grateful, as I said, to Signature, to Blue City Holdings, and all the folks who are involved in giving us this great opportunity, and in particular, I'm thankful to you, Bill, and your team for getting this ball to the goal line. We're going to get it over, but I recognize it's been a long road, but a very important one. And I look forward to next week's hearing.
Councilmember Constant?
Thank you, Mayor. So Sam, I just have a question, because I was very supportive of the memo, and I'm just a little confused on the delay, and maybe I wasn't listening attentively enough. But your original memo under item C was pretty specific about the curfew in giving direction that we're going to have consistency with what we have on existing airline tenants. What does the one week change from that? That's, I guess, what I'm not clear on.
It's consistent with airline tenants. It's not consistent with other airport tenants, specifically what we have with Atlantic and Avbase. That's first of all. Second of all, it varies from the language of the proposed agreement, sort of the, I'm trying to remember the exact term of the, perhaps, Bill, you can help me, the document that was prepared with the original RFP. What exactly did you describe that document as?
So let me see if I can put this in context, and I'll try to do it as simply and as succinctly as I can. In 2004, when the curfew was going through transition from a weight base to a noise base, the city entered into a number of agreements with tenants on the west side, and it inserted into those agreements a curfew provision that would allow for the eviction for repeated violations. They did so because as they were transitioning from weight base to noise base, there was some concern that maybe the curfew ordinance would not survive. Fast forward to 2007, the curfew did transition nicely. It's been upheld, and we've been enforcing it for years and years. We went to the airline agreement, and so we were negotiating that, and we thought that the city would want those same provisions that were in the other tenants' leases in the airline agreement. We were able to get the airlines to agree to it, but when the airline agreements came to council, CAP opposed it and then asked us to pull that language and keep it out of the lease. So we did. Coming forward with the west side, this proposal, we took the last action that we did with the airlines, figuring that you would want to stay consistent with that, so that was our recommendation. But then during that discussion, it was decided, no, let's go ahead and put the curfew provision back into this agreement. While negotiating with Signature and Blue City Holdings, they have objection to the curfew provision that's in the other tenants' leases. They're fine with a general provision that says that the tenant has to be in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and ordinances, rules and regulations. with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and ordinances, rules and regulations, which includes the curfew ordinance. So not to speak for Rick, I think, but from the city attorney's perspective and airport staff's perspective, we feel that it's consistent and that the city is protected and that we have adequate protection in the lease under the general provision to enforce the curfew. However, all these changes happened just in the last few days, so out of the abundance of caution, I think that Councilmember Liccardo is just requesting, let's postpone this, or at least for a week. Let us continue to negotiate, but explain to the community the transition and what has occurred, and show them that we can still protect and enforce the curfew.
If I could respond more directly. I wanted to make sure I responded exactly to the question, Pete, because that was what I was looking for.
I was going to say, when you do, if you could just repeat the words for F, because I couldn't write as quick as you said it.
Sure, yeah. The proposal is to return to council on the 16th in the evening session for discussion of language relating to, contractual language relating to the curfew, and to provide authority to the city manager to execute an agreement. Okay, so let me explain what's different. From the language of our memorandum, public would not be necessarily unnoticed that we are eliminating the right to terminate explicitly in the contract. We are eliminating the explicit curfew requirement in the contract and instead relying on the municipal code provision. That is, the contract refers to compliance with munico provisions relating to the curfew rather than explicitly including them in the agreement. And I think perhaps most importantly, retroactively, it would essentially revise the agreements we have with Atlantic and Avbase, which currently had contractual requirements for a curfew in their contracts. But because they have a me-too provision, essentially a provision that says if some other airport tenant, some other FBO, gets different language, we get the same language they do. So now we're retroactively going back and changing those contracts, and it seems to me that that is something that is worth public vetting because we've never provided notice, really, to the public that that's what we're doing. And I know, as this operates, it has no impact in our ability to enforce the curfew. I think everything is going to continue to be as it is. Nonetheless, there's good reason for people in the public to be suspicious because the change came belatedly, and I want to make sure we eliminate the suspicion. Let's vet it, expose it to sunshine, and move forward.
Okay, well, you know what I think about me-too clauses. I've said it a gazillion times in other forums.
I agree, but I didn't write them.
Yeah, I know, I know. It just seems to always cause us problems down the line. Well, first, let me say that I've met with folks from Signature and Jim Keneen, met with our airport staff, have been through this several times and talked to people on several occasions. I want to say I'm really excited about this investment. I think this is an incredible thing for a company to come here and put over $80 million in investment in the city of San Jose. I think it says a lot for the potential for our airport, the attractiveness of our region. I think that Signature should be commended for making such a commitment to the city of San Jose. I know I've told them personally, but I think it's important to do so publicly. I think that the design that they have provided is exceptional. I mean, it is a very, very attractive facility that's going to be built here. I'm excited that it's happening, a little dismayed that it'll be done when several of us are off the council, so we won't get the chance to maybe see the unveiling, maybe one or two of us might be, but a bunch won't be. And that's sad, and unfortunately, I'll never have the opportunity to use the services and, given my family size and my future economic outlook. But other than that, I'll be an admirer from afar. Maybe they'll be able to give me a tour or something in the future. So getting back to the memo at hand, I appreciate everything. I'm not a big fan of the one-week delay. I think it's, I really think we ought to be just real clear on what we expect in delegating to city staff what we expect and how we expect the language. Next Tuesday's council meetings, especially at night, promises, I'm sure, to be a zoo because of some other items on the agenda, and I think we're just going to rehash a bunch of the unnecessary sequoia arguments that I don't think we really need to. I think it's being used as a battering ram to stop successful projects and progress for our city. So I'd much rather support the memo that you originally put out and get this thing moving.
Vice Mayor, when?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank Mayor Reed and, of course, Councilmember Sam Liccardo and Rosa Rivera for the memo. Obviously, the economic opportunities that Signature is going to provide for the city of San Jose, not just the city of San Jose, but I think regionally, it's just immense. And the mayor actually has spoken about some of those opportunities. But like Pete, I just wanted to thank Signature for your investment and your interest in our city. This is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. We've made an investment of $1.3 billion to expand our airport. We have tried to do everything thanks to the work of Carl Gardino, of course, our mayor and some of the other folks to bring ANA here. Virgin Airline is going to start operating more, starting in May. And so there are just wonderful opportunities ahead of us, and I think that the addition of Signature here will brand our city in the way that it has not been branded before. We always talked about wanting to have a world-class airport, and I think that this addition will get us to that goal. And so, again, just wanted to thank you for your investment, and we look forward to the day where we actually can attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony. Thank you.
Councilwoman Camus?
I too want to thank staff for their hard work on this. I did have a chance to meet with staff, look at the site and meet with Signature Air. I want to thank them for investing in our community. And again, I think this proposal, I don't necessarily see a reason for delay. I know that, I did talk to staff about the differences in the laws, and I don't think there are any. I think we're going to treat them just like we treat all the other airlines. That's what was explained to me, and I'm very comfortable going forward with the memo as originally stated, if at all possible.
Councilmember Cora?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, with your mention of this little-known rule for mayors getting to speak first, I noticed, in a self-serving matter, that comes with a little bit less than 21 months left in your tenure. So-
Just for prepping the council for future appearances.
But in any case, you know, as I think when this came before us last April, as to kind of what approach to take with Airport West, I was in the minority in the sense that I thought we should do a planning-first approach. Given the fact that the majority had decided to go forward with the RFP, I kept an open mind as to what would come forward, and in evaluating the RFP, do feel that this can be, that this is a good project that I think will improve the airport site as a whole. And I think that, in my estimation at least, when I was first supportive of a planning-first approach, I didn't necessarily anticipate this level of a project to come so soon. Frankly, I thought it was going to end up being a situation where we just cobble together little properties and end up having not so much of a consistent development of Airport West, and that makes it very difficult in terms of our long-term development of the rest of the acreage. But there is a significant enough portion of the acreage that I feel that it will make it worthwhile to go forward with the project. I do have a question, I think was raised already, about the vacant area that's undeveloped. I do agree, I think that whatever we can do, and so certainly agree with the discretion to be given to you, Bill, and your team, to allow for that. And going forward, is that going to continue to pose an issue with that portion of the property, or is there something that could be done in terms of the radar facilities? Or is this something that we're just going to have to deal with going forward?
Well, first off, with a thousand-acre airport, you want to use every acre you can get of developable land. So we don't, the one thing we don't want to do is land-lock parcels to where it renders the remaining property undevelopable. That said, that northern, or I'm sorry, southern portion, which is about five acres-
About three and a half.
Three and a half acres, has a lot of impediments with it, with radar systems, communication systems, the air traffic control towers there, dah 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 dah. So it really is going to require us to work very closely with the developer to see what can be done and how it can be laid out, and that's why we just need the delegated authority to be able to do that as they go into design and as they start working out various different development proposals.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I'm perfectly fine with coming back in a week, even if all of us or most of us feel comfortable going forward today, I think that there's a significant number of folks in the community that don't feel comfortable going forward today, and if one week doesn't have any detrimental impact to, you know, to us going forward, then I'm fine with coming back on an evening to allow the community that ends up taking the brunt of the impacts of being near airport to have a full opportunity to voice their concerns. And yes, I mean, I think it may be more convenient for us to go forward today, but I think that that's not, convenience is not what we're here for. We're here to make sure that everyone has the full hearing. We had an appeal, and they had every opportunity to, you know, air their grievances, and I think that at the very least, we owe the same to the community members, people to do that. And so I'm more than happy to come back in just one week to be able to do that, and if it means that we're going to be here a little bit later next Tuesday, you know, so be it. But on a side note, there was, I think, one individual speaking specifically to environmental impacts, and I think I have my Air District hat on now, just in terms of going forward, and this is more just for continuing education, so to speak, as opposed to what any decision will be next week. I know that there are a number of different mitigation measures that are used, you know, throughout the transit industry, and so I'd just be curious, going forward, again, not necessarily asking for answers for next week, you know, what kinds of measures are taken, especially with these short flights and some of the commercial liners, and kind of what measures on the ground are taken to minimize environmental impacts to the surrounding area, both for the neighborhood but also just in general in terms of general air quality for our city and region. Thanks.
I'm going to support the modification to the motion reluctantly, just because we're here, we've been working on this a long time, but I certainly get the merits of the argument of having an additional discussion on the curfew. I've been here a long time, but way back to when Mayor Gonzalez was taking the lead on the airport, the council, the mayor worked very hard to maintain our curfew. We litigated our curfew, and, you know, it's very important at a policy level and at a practical level. And so I don't have any concerns about the language that we've been using. I think it's good, workable, and enforceable, and works for the airlines, it'll work for everybody else. But I'm okay for a one-week delay. It won't affect the negotiations. There are lots of items yet to be done, but that means staff needs to get out stuff so that when we get back here a week from tonight, that we're able to, you know, make the decision and move ahead. And I know it makes it sometimes difficult for staff to get things out timely, but I wouldn't anticipate, you know, staff having to get anything out until probably Friday. That gives everybody at least 72 hours, whatever there is. I mean, the language is the language. We have airline leases, we have the language, and so I think we can get that out, or at least a link to it, so people can see what it is we're talking about when we say the language in airline leases on Friday, and then we'll be prepared on Tuesday to move ahead. In the meantime, all these other issues, you've got to keep working on anyway. So I'm going to support the motion as made by Councilmember Liccardo, but I do want to assure the proposers who are ready, able, and willing to move ahead, that we're going to move ahead quickly and move at the speed of business and looking at their schedule of things ultimately they need to do, because we want to make sure that we can meet their needs so they can begin to pay us rent, which we sorely need at the airport. Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to thank Maria Sostre, the CEO of Signature, for coming here, and all of the folks from Signature, and for the investment, for the proposed investment in San Jose, and also Blue City Holdings as well. This is really an exciting moment, I think, in San Jose, looking at this development, and as has already been said, I think the largest one of its kind in this country. So we're very proud to see this come to San Jose, and I view this as a temporary delay. I think it's very important, though, Councilmember Liccardo's request to have this vetted in the community in terms of the curfew. I think that's a very important thing that we need to do, but I don't see this as any taking away from any of our will to want to move forward this as quickly as possible. And so I think that we will be able to hear our community, which we always, I think we're very proud of San Jose's record in terms of really making sure that the community does have input, and especially when things have come down kind of more at the last minute with some of these disclosures, I think it's important in terms of being transparent with our community that we do have that discussion. But I view that as a speed bump and not anything that's going to really slow us down in any meaningful way and support moving full steam ahead. Thank you.
Councilman Liccardo?
Just to clarify, the justification for the modification, I think Pete suggested it was sequoia. It doesn't have anything to do with sequoia. It's about sunshine and about the revelation of information, ensuring that public has a fair chance to be heard. What I heard from the two dozen or so folks who emailed me was, "I really like to be there, but you're doing this during working hours, and you just told us about this." And that's the challenge we're trying to grapple with.
Councilwoman Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll start by disclosing I've had meetings as well with Signature and a number of individuals on the issue. I'm going to ask just a few questions, and one of them is the mention of no city investment a number of times. I'm trying to understand the significance of that, maybe that there was an investment of city dollars on the Atlantic investment? Is that the case, or was there no city investment there as well?
No, council member. What we do is, when it comes to general aviation facilities, we do make the investments for commercial facilities, airlines, so we invest in terminals and the support facilities and so on and so forth. But when it comes to general aviation, we just make the land available for lease. So our investment is building the runways, taxiways, and maintaining all of that. Otherwise, all of the facilities on the West Side were private facilities, 100% privately-financed and developed.
Thank you. And forgive me if I'm going to ask a question that may have been provided for in the document somewhere. There's a lot of information to read through over the last week, and even more so in the last day or two, and it's more or less in regard to the curfew issue and the strong statements from the supplemental memo that you had that states that Signature was not willing to continue negotiation under certain conditions. So were these listed in the RFP or spelled out in the RFP?
Very good question. No, they were not, and that was an oversight on our part. We were instructed to include the curfew language in the RFP, and we neglected to do so. And so after we started negotiations with Signature, then we realized the mistake, and we went and told them that we were instructed to put this language in, and it hit them by surprise. So that's the reason for the supplemental memo that was released yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. So then help me understand a little bit more about the significance of this language, that if the current FBOs are able to operate under it, and the expectation from us is, you know, they pay their lease and they're profitable, then why wouldn't another FBO be able to operate under these same conditions or at least the same language? I mean, there's been a major commitment on their part and a very strong commitment verbally to San Jose, and they've got a lot of stakeholders to show up and speak about their value here, and then for the strong statement that they're just willing to walk away for language that, as I understand, already exists for other operators. I'm trying to understand how significant that language is and why would be such a major issue.
Well, I guess maybe that's a question better directed to Signature, but I'll take a stab at it. They're investing a considerable amount of money, probably more than any other West Side tenant has invested in the airport, and they're concerned that one interpretation of a violation of the curfew could cause them to lose their entire investment. We have multiple means of enforcing the curfew. The first is under the municipal code. If there is an intrusion, we investigate the intrusion, and just for council's benefit, if an aircraft arrives one second past 11:30, that's an intrusion, and if it arrives one second before 6:30, that's an intrusion. An intrusion report is immediately initiated, and we start to investigate the intrusion. Now, most of them are compliant. Either they're below the noise impacts of the curfew, or they're grandfathered in, or it was a force majeure issue where weather, air traffic control, or something other than the operator forced the intrusion. But if it's found to be a violation, then a $2,500 fine is imposed- But if it's found to be a violation, then a $2,500 fine is imposed on that operator and we go after that operator. The vast majority of those that are deemed to be violations, about 83, 84% last calendar year, were the airlines. Very, as a matter of fact, out of 28, only one was general aviation. However, under the leases, we also have the ability to evict if we, if there are repeated violations. And there never have been. In the, in Signature's case, they're, they're objecting to the curfew provision, but they're okay with the general provision that says you have to be compliant with all local laws, ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. So we feel that from the city's perspective, we're still protected. We, if, if they repeatedly violate the curfew, we can take action against the lease. And that's a, that's an issue more for, for Rick and Kevin.
Okay. That, that is very helpful. I guess the only issue that I run into in the description or the explanation you just gave me is, is whether their investment is any more than anybody else's. I don't think a monetary threshold is where we all of a sudden say, "Well, we're going to modify this language because someone's investing 100 million instead of 60 million." I mean, this is a level playing field. And if folks are able to operate under it, existing businesses, then I would expect someone else's. Again, I'm not in the industry. And if there's a better comfort with changes, and it's still, as you pointed out, protects the city of San Jose, which is why I'm asking these questions, then more than likely, I'm also comfortable as well. But that's the, that's the reason for my question. So I wanted to clarify as to why I'm asking these questions. So as I mentioned, I've heard this, I've had an opportunity to meet with Signature and I've also had the opportunity to hear this presentation at the Airport Competitiveness Committee. And as I said privately in the meeting and publicly in the meeting, I'm very, very appreciative of the investment of these folks and the willingness to step up and invest in San Jose, as I say that to every business that, that meets with me. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I too met with folks from Signature and, and also from Atlantic through this whole process. It started about a year ago. I too was also on the minority side of the vote initially, when the question was to whether or not we want to issue an RFP to get where we're at today. My, my main concerns, Councilmember Cora spoke very well about them. I think we shared the same concerns that, you know, we, we looked at, should we be, should we putting, should we be putting the cart before the horse when it comes to, you know, planning this out? And, you know, I'm still concerned about runway 1129, but, you know, I know that Bill, you know, we talked extensively about this when you've come to my office and we'll deal with it when we have to deal with it. And I hope that as, as certainty comes about with runway 1129, that our existing FBOs that are, that could and will probably be effective, that there's a plan to deal with that, because we are ultimately going to have to deal with that. So just wanted to, to make that statement. But with that said, had no idea of the magnitude of the proposal that is before us. And I think that for our city, you know, it says a lot for the confidence in, in our city as it relates to the, the economy of the Bay Area. You know, there's two other big airports that we're constantly fighting with for commercial business. However, this really puts us front and center. And so I, I thank the, the applicants, Signature, for that confidence and commitment to our city. So with that, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd too like to thank Signature and the proposal they put together, Airport Staff, for working through an extensive RFP process. And I think as councilmembers, we've often seen through the RFP process that there's sometimes, not everyone makes it and there's appeals. And I think Airport Staff really covered that between that and legal. We certainly do have a quagmire of trying to, or a dilemma of trying to have the monies to cover the airport. And I think one, we have a proposal here that certainly offers the option to grow revenue to cut, to try to cover those fees, because ultimately the general fund, as much as we say it's an enterprise fund and it's separate, but if things really hit the fan, the general fund's going to be impacted. And I want to thank Airport Staff. Back a year ago, April 2nd, we met here and brought the community in. And we had an extensive discussion just on curfew. And long, it was, I mean, we must have been here two hours. We had a pretty good, good crowd. So I appreciate the staff making their time for that. And then when it came to April 3rd and the council had the proposal forward, I, along with some of the other council members, voted no. Mine were not based on planning. It wasn't based on environment. I just really felt that there was the potential for more late-night noise. Because at the end, when we had the April 2nd meeting, there are things that we just don't know, and Airport Staff admitted it. We really don't know how many flights we'll have of airplanes that are exempt from the curfew between 11:30 and 6:00 AM. It's a variable that we don't know. We won't know till it's done. But there's a level of risk there. And so again, we can grow the revenue to cover the expenses or we can just manage the staffing of the airport in different ways to achieve a level of savings to end up at the same result. So, and I really don't believe any wording or any public meeting about the curfew is going to change anything. In the end, we are bound by a court case. That court case says planes of this type can fly today 24/7. But what the community sees is, is that you are enabling more of these types of planes to be at San Jose Airport that would potentially fly during these hours. And we talk about the community of established neighborhoods around the airport, and that's a certain population. But I guarantee there'll be a larger affected population when people that are further away from the airport, who are really used to hearing nothing at night, then do hear something at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. Again, these are variables we cannot control, no matter what we put in an ordinance with Signature. So the question comes back to the original of being consistent. My viewpoint is on trying to manage the airport and the value it brings, as long as the expenses, is to continue to drive costs down, even though it may not be popular or few. I don't see why I should have to affect potentially many, many residents, whatever that number ends up being, with the, with the late-night intrusions. And so I think the council is being pragmatic in the space of what they have to do. But in the end, it's not, this will, this will do nothing to really avoid the unavoidable, which we covered extensively at that April 2nd meeting, of how many flights will be occurring during those curfew hours. We luckily have a curfew for large planes, so we're safe there. But again, the community understands or sees that there is going to be an additional amount of planes that are legally allowed to fly 24/7. Now, if this conversation's 15, 20 years from now, when newer technologies are adopted and those planes are, you know, more Batman-like and make less noise, but we're not there today. Not everyone's made those investments. We still have legacy aircraft that will still be able to fly under that noise. So I won't be able to support the motion. And I do wish, you know, we, you know, listen, we don't always agree. That's a legislative body. But I think the city did good work in what way they were trying to do with the staff, with the proposals that come forward. But for me, I have to be cognizant of big picture and small picture. And I don't think it's, this is small in the fact that it, I think it could be a larger issue down the road. But again, we won't know till it's built. And I guess I would ask you this, Bill Sherry, and you won't be here at the time, but I'm sure you're going to visit back for the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting. Will we be able to record from today to when the place is open and it's in full operation, the amount of flights regard, you know, that are exempt from the curfew that will be able, that will be, have flown, you know, takeoff, landings, et cetera?
The quick answer is yes.
Okay. So what I would simply ask at some point, and as a friendly amendment, even though I won't be supporting the motion, is that we do something to record and come back to council with an informational memo, six months, one month, one year, 18 months, two months, years, after this is built and fully functional, to really know what the net effect is. Because again, there may be less, there may be the same, there may be more. But when you increase the capacity, potentially there's more. But I think it's up for that future council to be able to know whether or not the community concern was matched what happened. So I think that's important.
Councilmember Constant.
Boy, after all that, I forgot what I was going to say. So you guys are lucky.
We'll come back to you.
No, it's okay. I just want to say that if we, I kept thinking about all the planes. I grew up in the flight path of Moffett Field and they're a lot noisier than anything that flies into our airport. I just want to make sure that when we come back next week, that we all have the resolve to resolve this next week and that there's a vote. Because I, I won't be sympathetic at all to any requests for deferral next week. This is something that we need to move forward on. Personally, I'd rather us say, "We're going to vote today." But I can count votes. I'm at least smart enough to count up to six. So next week, we, we just have to do this. So we have to move it forward.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank Councilmember Campos for raising the one issue I forgot to ask about in my notes. And it's really posed to the mayor and the individuals on the memo, or also staff in terms of item number E, and that's the reference to 1129, and initiate planning for the resolution. There is no timeline, so to speak, associated with that. And it's silent on the issue of when that might take place or how long that might take. And I recognize that probably on your side, this side of the dice is probably because it's an unknown issue and you can't really answer that question or commit to any timeline. So maybe I should look to Airport Director and ask, "What in your mind do you see as a potential timeline for this? Whether it's a couple of weeks or a couple of years?" And just to get a sense of what we're looking at here.
Not a couple of weeks, not a couple of years. I think it's probably in a couple of months timeframe. There is, I think, a strong desire on the part of many, even from those that would like to see the runway stay, as well as those that would like to see the runway go, to get a decision made. So there are a number of issues that we've got to work through. Getting this under lease and getting it under contract and, and, and under development is certainly primary. We also have the last phase of a taxiway whiskey, which is a $55 million parallel taxiway that's being built. We need to get that done. But the short answer, Councilmember, is I would hopefully be underway with, with that study within months after getting this development under construction.
Thank you for the answer. And as I've mentioned before, quite some time ago, I really think this issue is really important to folks out there and I would assume important to the airport staff as we know what we want to do, especially as related to the West Side and the future of the West Side and the remaining acreage out there. So thank you.
If I could just respond to your question, Councilmember Rocha. The recommendation is a little bit vague about the starting date for just the reasons that Bill Sherry just outlined. But certainly want to get this project done and moving before we take on another big effort, because it could be a big effort. But the other part of the direction in the memo is, don't start that study until you've had a chance to work with the stakeholders. So that Atlantic and HP and Avbase and all of the folks that might be affected by it have some opportunity with the staff to figure out what to do, how to do and how to think about a planning. Just don't launch into a planning effort and doing a study. And that was the concept. Because everybody has a real interest in it and everybody wants to get an answer. But we want to make sure the stakeholders are fully engaged with meetings on it before we officially launch some, something one way or the other. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to address the issue that Councilmember Oliverio raised about the option between growing or cutting costs. Bill, could you give me a sense in percentage terms, roughly how many employees have you cut, for lack of a better term, either through attrition or by layoff, between the time at our peak, which was probably, what, '07, to what was probably 2011 when we were at our trough?
More than half, I think. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of 56, 57%.
And as you're attempting to keep an airport running now, do you have much room to cut?
No. I guess, you know, my best professional advice to you as the council is, we're, we're about as lean as we can get. And it's not just in staffing. It's also in terms of every other service that we provide, every service delivery that, that we're required to do, whether it's required by the state, the feds or whatever. If anything, I think we need to start adding back. When we cut, we did so thinking that it was going to be temporary, not knowing that this recession was going to be as prolonged as it is and that the downturn in employments was going to be what it is. So I, I could not in good conscience recommend any more cutting. We've got to figure out how to grow.
Thank you, Bill. Coming from somebody who's had to recommend a lot of cutting in the past, I think you have a lot of credibility on this issue. And I just think it's important that we recognize a false choice here between adding and cutting in terms of the safety of the passengers and our ability to be able to have a functioning airport that'll support the city.
There are still two items left on the Airport Competitiveness Plan on cost controls, and that was outsourcing police and outsourcing fire, which is not the same thing as cutting the operational staff. And those are still out there as potential things that we may have, have to do.
We have that resolved for this year and FY14. Both issues will resurrect in FY15.
Okay, but by FY15, Virgin America's going to be flying 100 flights a day and A&amp;A will be flying a couple of flights a day.
We hope so.
Couple of dozen flights a day, somewhere in there. That'll help us a lot. Councilmember Herrera.
Yeah, I've been on this Airport Competitiveness Committee, I think it's been two years we've been listening to these issues. And when we became aware of the depth of the financial situation we're facing, it was kind of stunning in terms of debt service and the things we needed to do. And as you pointed out, Bill, airports across the country do look at development as a way to bring in money to their airport. Airlines can make quick decisions to come and go. When they come, we like it. When they leave, we don't. So we need to, this development and the, and the idea of getting this side of the airport developed is critical to our being able to handle debt service in the future. And I, I don't think it's a complete answer. Is it? It's not a complete answer, though. We're still going to have to find other things. But it's certainly a big piece of it. And when we put out the RFP, I had no idea what we'd get. I mean, I was sort of like even the people that were on the other side of it. I was sort of hoping. It was a wishing of prayer. And my goodness, our prayers were answered with, with the scope and the quality of this project. This is amazing. So this is definitely worthy of Silicon Valley, the capital of Silicon Valley. And I'm very excited about it. But we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that this is a challenge. And this is a piece, a very hopeful piece. It's something great that, that is moving forward. But it is, it is part of a bigger picture that we're going to have to work through. But we certainly, cutting, we just can't get there.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. I just wanted to clarify that when we had a study session about the airport back in March 2010, and Bill Sherry, you provided us a variety of things to save money at the airport. But some of those were politically untouchable. Those are ways to save revenue. You're, you are at a lower personnel count than you've been in the past. But in the end, there are things you can do that allows you to save money. But again, they are political taboo. For me, my political taboo is allowing people to sleep at night. And I mean, again, I don't mean any disconcertion to any of my colleagues. We, we vote as we vote, we say as we say. But in the end, you did provide us Airport Staff with alternatives to save millions of dollars in revenue.
I think we're about done. It's about time for a vote. Before we do, I want to thank Atlantic Aviation, Avbase, ACM, HP Aviation, all of the tenants, sub-tenants that help fund the airport, because they've made major investments there. In the case anybody's wondering, you don't have to wait. There's space available today on the airport. There are opportunities to move your aircraft from wherever you've got them into San Jose and take advantage of the, the great facility there. I'm sure that Atlantic would be happy to take your phone calls. And we look forward to seeing more aircraft parked out there that are generating not only revenues for the airport, but tax dollars for the city of San Jose. But we don't have to wait for this project to do that. We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Liccardo's motion modifying the memo on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? I count one opposed. Councilmember Oliverio, motion carries. Good luck, staff. We'll see you in a week. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be the report of the city manager, Ed Chikata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, the city manager has no report today.
Item 3.3, order the city's deferred compensation program. The city ordered Sharon Erickson. We'll take that one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have with me Joe Royce and Erica Janoff from my office. Also joining us are Alex Gerza, deputy city manager, and Emily Conant from the HR department. You have before you our audit of the city's deferred compensation program. Our focus was the crediting and handling of employee accounts, and on identifying opportunities to streamline and improve the administration of the program. The city has historically maintained two deferred compensation plans, which allow city employees to supplement their retirement savings by deferring a portion of their income. The first is a voluntary 457 plan, available to all employees who elect to participate. It is similar to a voluntary 401K plan in the private sector. The second plan, the PTC plan, is a mandatory plan in lieu of social security for part-time employees. Our report includes two findings. First, that the city can improve controls to ensure employee contributions and credits are accurate. With regards this issue, the city's program has corrected previously identified problems with crediting employee accounts, and is moving to correct another crediting issue that we identified amongst a small number of employees. The city is also moving to automate the process. Our second finding was that the city could provide savings to participants through administrative efficiencies and reduced fees. We point out that while fees have been reduced in recent years and appear to be comparable to other jurisdictions and private 401K plans, there are opportunities to provide savings to participants. Plan participants pay the full cost of administering these plans. Our recommendations include eliminating duplication of efforts between the third-party administrator, ING, between HR and finance. We recommend implementing periodic reviews of the plan's administrative fees to ensure costs are equitably distributed across participants. We recommend addressing a surplus of funds in the deferred comp fund, about $400,000 worth of participants' money that is being held in excess of the required reserve requirement. We recommend reviewing the Institute Investment Menu for savings opportunities. And we recommend publishing and distributing more detailed fee disclosures. I did want to point out one recommendation in our report, recommendation four, which would streamline the process for amending plan documents, and clarify the roles and responsibilities of the Human Resources Department and the seven-member Deferred Compensation Advisory Committee. When we presented this report to the DCAC, the Deferred Comp Advisory Committee, on March 18th, this recommendation drew the most attention. It has four parts. The first three parts recommend clarifying roles and responsibilities between the HR Department and the seven-member Employee Deferred Compensation Advisory Committee. Under the current municipal code, the DCAC is the named administrator of the plan. Among other jurisdictions, sometimes the administrator or fiduciary role is assigned either to city staff or to a committee. However, to save costs for participants, we're recommending naming the city as the administrator and clarifying the oversight rules and responsibilities of the DCAC. For practical purposes, the administration of the plan would not change. Payroll will still handle deferments. Participants will still deal directly with ING. ING would still continue to hold participants' funds. The employee representatives on the DCAC would provide transparency in an advisory and review capacity. Part C recommends leaving the basic provisions of the program in the Muni Code, recommending removal of the specifics of the plan from the Muni Code. I do not believe this particular part of that recommendation is controversial. Among the jurisdictions we surveyed as part of this audit, San Jose was the only plan that had the plan documents embedded in the Muni Code. We were also asked at the committee level, when the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee reviewed this, how much money we think this streamlining would save. We don't have an estimate, but participants do pay an average of $60 to $70 per year to cover the city's administrative costs. Streamlining, in our opinion, would reduce, but not eliminate, those costs. I want to say in closing that this was an extraordinarily cooperative process with the HR Department and the staff in the deferred compensation program. That's reflected in the administration's response, which is shown on the yellow pages of this report. The PISFIT, the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee, did hear this report on March 21st and recommended its acceptance by the full council. We're happy to answer any questions.
I had one question, perhaps I missed it, and that is the participation rate for our city employees. I believe it's pretty high.
Yes, good afternoon, Alistair. As a deputy city manager, approximately 72% of our employees participate. We are very proud of having an extremely high participation rate among our employees in the deferred compensation program. There's approximately $1 million a pay period that is compensation that is deferred.
Good. Well, improving the performance is important to at least 72% of our workforce, and those of us who don't participate aspire to participate in it, I think. Eventually, maybe everybody will be in there. Councilmember Constant.
Thanks. Just a quick question, more directed at the city management side. Is there, have we discussed in the past, or is there a particular reason we don't have retirement services and the retirement boards overseeing the administration and the functionality of these, when what they do is exactly the same type of work? And I've noted in other areas, you have the same boards doing both types of programs.
Yes, Councilmember Constant, thank you for the question. We haven't, in a formal way, evaluated it, but it is something that we in the Human Resource Department have been thinking about, is where is the best place for the administration of this program? You make a very good point that our Department of Retirement Services and the boards already have the expertise in this program, and in some ways, might be able to provide a synergy between providing advice to employees regarding the deferred compensation program, at the same time as they're providing information and advice on the defined benefit program, as well as, again, having the expertise in-house. It's something, again, that we can continue to explore as we look at the best way to administer this program.
I think it's important we do that, because even if you look simply at the stakeholder representation, there, the stakeholders that are represented on the, was it DCAC, whatever we call it, and the retirement boards, you've got the same classifications of people there. So, I think the work could be very streamlined, the messaging to our employees could be a lot better. And I think that we would spend less money training duplicate people to learn about asset allocation, about all the different things that we do on those boards. So, with that, I'll just make a motion to approve with my thanks to all those who participated.
We have a motion to approve. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Sharon and her staff for another outstanding report, and I really appreciate the administration's response to the audit. We had a very informative discussion at the public safety meeting, and we were able to, staff were able to answer a lot of the questions that were posed by the committee members. So, with that, I hope that my colleagues will support the audit. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvario.
Quick question. Alex Gerza, is there a way to publish or promote for the other 26% that don't use the program, that, hey, these are the types of benefits you get? And what I mean is, here's an example of someone that's been here X amount of years, and they deferred, and now it's worth X amount of money. And if you just took advantage of this program, this could be for you. This is more of an HR type of thing?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, there is education and information sessions available, but we clearly can work with our provider, ING, to do some specific outreach to employees, maybe, who are not participating, and get them to participate. It's especially going to become more important as we have employees in our Tier Two Pension Plan, where supplementing the defined benefit plan with a deferred compensation component is going to be very important. So, we're going to continue to increase the amount of education and information we provide to our employees.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Our next item would be 4.1, Development Agreement with Century Court Schmidt CS Suffer Line at All. You have a motion to approve. Joe Horbital.
I do appreciate the motion for approval. I did want to note that in the agreement, we realized that there was a sentence that was duplicative, and so it is in Section 3, under Obligation of Parties, Part A, Developers' Obligations, 2D, that we deleted the last sentence that was in the paragraph that you saw, that was distributed by the City Attorney's Office, that Sandy Lee helped fix with me today, the ending. And so it ends today with collectively, the affordable housing contribution. It's in per-ends, would be the end of that sentence. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
That would be included in the motion as clarified, according to Joe.
And for clarification, the reason why that is, it is a flat-rate contribution with this development agreement. It's not a per-unit contribution. The developers, still looking at the project, they may drop a couple of units, and we wanted to make sure this was clear. It was 2.6 million.
On that point, while the developers are agreeing to contribute 2.6 million, they haven't done so yet. That's a future event, and this is not an appropriation action. This is approval of agreement, and it is ultimately up to the council, some future council, whenever that may be, to make the decision on how the funds get appropriated eventually through the usual process. Councilmember Camus.
I just had a question on the zoning. I know we give special incentives for high-rise developments. This has nothing to do with this technically, but I would like to see that opportunity for high-rises to be planned, I mean, the tax credits to be expanded to the transit corridor on light rail. I'd like to see incentives being given to developers to do these high-rises close to the transit corridors, because that is, of course, what we're trying to do in our 2040 plan. And I don't know if that's being thought of currently. I know, you know, I know we've given some incentives to the people who want to generate buildings downtown, but since nobody's generating those, I was wondering if we can see if we could, at least look into expanding that into at least near light rail.
Councilmember Camus, the incentive is right now for downtown, when we do have two projects that are moving through the building permit process, that we're expected to come out of the ground this summer. It is ultimately the policy direction of the city council of where those incentives go, and it is a function that, as the council has debated this in the past, about how much money are we willing to put into incentives on a kind of all-in basis, and then where best to get the best return on those. And the policy decision has been to focus those in downtown, where there's a noticeable concentration of that activity. But in the end, it is the council's decision of how to set that policy.
Councilmember Liccardo.
I just wanted to clarify, there, I know there's a lot that was said there. There are two projects that are going to break ground roughly in the next four months in the downtown, as a result of the incentives. Three more are under discussion, I expect and hope, that at least one or two of those will break ground the following year. So, I think things are moving forward as a result of the incentive.
We have a motion, I have no cards from the public to speak. We have a motion with the modification outlined by Joe Horbital. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Taking us to item 4.3, the 2013-14 Annual Action Plan for the Five-Year Consolidated Today's a public hearing. The draft plan's been released for public comment through April 30th. We'll have a council hearing on the final plan on April 30th, and we have to submit it to the Housing and Urban Development Department on May 15th. So, today is, we're here to take public testimony. Of course, there'll be some staff presentation as well, but we will not be taking action today. Staff?
Hi, this is Jackie Morales-Fran. I'm the assistant director for the Housing Department. And you do have before you the draft annual action plan that programs over $12 million of federal funding. Today, as you stated, it's the opening of our public comment period, where we will be accepting public testimony on the plan and receiving feedback and direction. We will be coming back on April 30th, when you're going to be able to take action on the plan. In addition, we did provide you a supplemental memo regarding some updates to the action plan to address the impact of sequestration. On February 26th, the council approved the extension of our public service contracts, which are funded by CBG, ESG, and Hopla for an additional two years. And shortly after that, the federal government informed us we needed to cut 5% from all of our HUD funds as the result of sequestration. In addition, we received a cut in our ESG funding. We held a special meeting of the Housing and Community Development Advisory Commission, where we presented options on how to address these cuts. As a result, we are recommending reducing the foreclosure help contract to a total of $100,000, $50,000, which will come from these new funds, and reducing the three-place base contracts by $1,500 to approximately $98,000. Fair Housing, Senior Services, and Homeless Programs, all of their funding levels will remain unchanged. Again, no action is required today, but we are available for questions.
I had a question about the anticipated resources for the year, which was page 28, 29 of the draft plan. There's actually $243 million of total city funds, plus non-city funds, with the, non-city funds being the vast majority of it. You said something about programming $12 million. I'm not sure where that number fits into this.
Actually, it's the grand total on the left side, which is that 14 million.
That's what we're talking about, programming here?
Yes.
We don't have control over the...
You don't have control of all this other, this other funding sources for this plan? The plan really is only focused on our federal funds. So, if you look on the, actually, on page, on page 13, the entitlement grants are listed. And if you total those up, those are close to 12 million. But in addition, we do have some program income that is identified in each of the different funding sources. So, we're, the plan really is focusing on the, these federal funds, the CBG, home, ESG, and Hopla.
And the other $228 million of non-city funds?
Are not actually programmed during this. They're just to illustrate how the city matches the federal investments and all our other investments, how they all come together.
Right. One of the items in the other category is developer equity, which is $5,850,000. That looks like a really small number to do actual projects. So, we're not really talking about projects here. There's not much in it for affordable housing projects. It's really a variety of specific spending that doesn't generate necessarily much new additional housing.
Well, there is an assumption there of, if you look further up, there's $43 million and 9% tax credit equity. That's actually project development money that would come with some new development. So, in terms of our federal funds, we do have, we're anticipating that we are going to fund one development out of our home funds, and we are also anticipating that we could fund up to two new developments with the current dollars that we have projected from our other funding sources, which include program income and some developer agreements where we've received additional funding.
And then, the other question on that page 28 is the Section 8 rental vouchers, tenant-based and project-based, that $96 million is actually the biggest number on this whole program or Section 8 rental vouchers. And I understand that the sequester and changes at the federal level are affecting Section 8 as well. So, is this number reflective of the new reality or the old reality?
This number reflects the old reality. As part of our annual action plan, we do have to go to the Housing Authority and incorporate what their programs will be producing. So, yes, we'll have to update all of the action plan under the current, the new sequestration and their impacts.
Once we find out what they are.
Correct.
Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, asked a question of mine, and I guess, should we assume, I mean, I see the number, 21 million... number, 21 million, used in the media in terms of the impacts on Section 8. Should we be expecting a pro-rata share of that, or does that somehow get distributed in different ways, other than sort of the standard pro-rata population basis that we see in a lot of programs?
For the Section 8 program?
Yeah.
Actually, I believe you're going to be dealing with the MTW plan later during this meeting, and we do have some representatives from the Housing Authority that could respond to that.
Yeah. Good point. Thanks, Jackie. Quick question about the homeless census. I know that we have a 2011 number used here, and I saw a media report suggesting we had an increase in 20% in homeless count, but I was wondering if the final numbers were back from our last census?
The final numbers are not back, although we have confirmed that all of the nonprofits have responded, which will now allow us to finally crunch all the numbers and get a result.
Okay. Thanks.
I have some requests to speak, and we'll take some public testimony. Trang Van, Matt Werka, and Sandra Murillo.
Hi, my name is Trang Van. I'm the Housing Program Manager and Aid Services at the Health Trust. We currently receive two grants from the City of San Jose. One is a HOPO grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, as well as a HOPOSPINS grant, which is a special program of national significance. Between those two programs, we house approximately 146 low-income households who are either homeless or at risk of homelessness, as well as having 163 households on our waitlist currently. The Health Trust is the largest provider of non-medical service, aid services in the county. We provide not just housing subsidies, but also housing case management, benefits counseling, nurse case management, and self-sufficiency services. We're the only housing program in this county that's specific to the HIV/AIDS population, and the CDC reports that more than 56,000 new infections yearly, and the housing is still the greatest unmet need. The CDC and HUD publish a study showing that stable housing meant improved access to medical care, improved adherence to medications, thus reducing the risk of transmission by 96%. Housing stability has proven to be a cost-effective prevention and treatment intervention for our HIV/AIDS population, and therefore, the Health Trust asks the council to continue funding support for aid services in the community. Thank you.
Matt Werka, Sandra Murillo.
Mayor, council members, good afternoon. I want to thank staff especially for thoughtfully moving forward with the recommendation that you see in front of you to fund the foreclosure help center specifically. With the leadership of the Housing Trust and others, we were really able to come together in the last, over the last month, and hammer out what really is a compromise, and utilizing, you know, the scarce resources that the federal government has been able to provide to the city, and the city to also step up. So we just want to recognize that, and also to recognize the fact that while there's a lot of positive press out there, and there is definitely momentum coming out of the foreclosure crisis, we're still in the foreclosure crisis. We're still over 500% of the foreclosure rate of 2006. So there still is some work to be done, and in fact, a recent study that, survey that was done statewide by California Reinvestment Corporation, found that about 60 to 70% of our clients are still facing dual tracking, which means that the homes being taken from them while they're still seeking loan modifications, and also the single point of contact where folks were originally supposed to just deal with one, single point of contact with their lenders and get a fresh shake that way, and that's still problematic. So there's still a lot of work to be done in this space, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Sandra Murillo, Annette Kirken.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Sandra Murillo, Grants Administrator for Housing Trust, Silicon Valley. On behalf of the Foreclosure Help Consortium, I'm here to also express thanks and appreciation to the council and the Housing Department for the continued funding to operate the foreclosure help program instead of elimination. As you know, the City of San Jose opened the foreclosure help center in 2009, when foreclosure filings were at their highest at 16,000. During this time, nearly 5,000 homes were taken back by the banks or sold at auction. In July 2012, the Housing Trust's lead agency to the foreclosure help consortium was awarded $300,000 to continue to operate the program, and opened a center in downtown San Jose and a satellite at Most Holy Trinity Church. As we've all read, and as Matt has stated, foreclosures have decreased, however, they still do exist. In 2012, foreclosures were at the 2007 levels, with 1,269 homes that went back to banks or were sold to third parties. To put this into perspective, in 2006, right before the crisis, only 151 homes were taken back by the banks or sold at auction. The environment has changed for the better, and fewer homes are being foreclosed. However, we continue to need to provide education, information, and guidance to distressed homeowners. Over the last months, the seven agencies have aligned housing counseling, financial counseling, and legal assistance services to guide homeowners in distress to find a housing solution. We've also provided a lot of advocacy work, such as working with the DA to address fraud. We provide services in several languages, and we also have identified clients, past clients, who may be eligible for compensation under the countrywide settlement with the Department of Justice over improper lending standards with minority homeowners. So again, I would like to thank council and the Housing Department for their continued support with the program. Thank you.
Annette Kirken?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Annette Kirken. I'm an attorney at the Fair Housing Law Project of the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. We work closely with foreclosure help and provide legal services to distressed homeowners, primarily those who are facing foreclosure or who have already lost their home to foreclosure. Like my cohorts before me, I thank you for continued funding of foreclosure help. There is still a great need for foreclosure help assistance. So many homeowners, when faced with foreclosure or when they're looking for alternatives to foreclosure, often feel overwhelmed and not really quite sure where to turn for assistance. They get lost in the process. Working with the HUD counselors helps them to coordinate their effort to apply for a loan modification and to avoid the loan modification scams. Oftentimes, homeowners are still dual-track through the process of loan modification and foreclosure, at which point we can intervene, and we've been successful in working with the HUD counselors and with lender representatives to unwind a foreclosure and get a trustee's deed rescinded, and allow the homeowner to obtain a loan modification that keeps him in their home. So we appreciate the support for the program. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony for today. Obviously, the comments will be accepted through the end of the period before we take action, but we're taking no action today. So we will merely move on to the next item on our agenda. That would be item 4.5, actions related to the San Carlos Senior Apartments Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Oliverio?
I don't believe there's a staff presentation, so I just, as you know, my colleagues have a certain viewpoint on this topic, and I'll be staying consistent in that regard. And so as Councilmember Constant is the next closest council district to the area, I'd defer to him to make a motion.
Councilmember Constant?
Well, I don't even know much about the project other than what I see here, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion to approve the staff recommendations. No requests from the public to speak on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? Got one opposed. One opposed, Councilmember Oliverio opposed. Next item is 5.1, Anti-Graffiti and Litter Program Semiannual Report. This has previously been presented at a council committee level, so this is not a surprise to anybody. We do have some folks who want to speak, and we'll have a staff presentation before that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Julie Edmonds-Mares, Acting Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. I'm joined today by Park Manager Mike Will and Division Manager Mario Maciel. This is our third annual semi, excuse me, semi-annual report to the mayor and council for the anti-graffiti and anti-litter program since moving to the alternative service delivery model for, in the graffiti area in July of 2011. Over the past year and a half, we found that the new model has improved quality and responsiveness of our anti-graffiti program and services to our neighborhoods, and has also done so in a cost-effective manner. Really, the cornerstone of this program, though, is community engagement and partnership. It is through our collective community desire to wipe out graffiti as quickly as possible that those partners have helped us remove the blight within our community. Our committed and dedicated network of volunteers who help us report graffiti via the app or through the telephone number, who help us paint over tags on a regular basis, our collaborations inside the City of San Jose with the Police Department, the Planning, Building, and Code Department, and even more recently, the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force Interagency Collaboration Committee. Outside agency partners like Caltrans, Union Pacific, and the Santa Clara County Water District, all who remove graffiti on their property, really help us create that network of folks that help us remove graffiti on a regular basis. As with any new service, our program continues to evolve. Sometimes we're successful in one area, such as quickly removing graffiti within the city limits, and we have an unintended consequence, such as increased graffiti on the freeways and overpasses. And so when that happens, we shift our resources and work to collaborate with other partners. Ultimately, our program exists to ensure that the residents of San Jose are able to enjoy the beautiful city free of graffiti and litter. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mike Will, who's going to go over the performance for the first six months of the fiscal year and the programs.
The program itself continues to be on track, saving the City of San Jose $600,000 as projected for this current fiscal year. Again, this particular report covers the first six months of our fiscal year. This has been a very active period. Graffiti Protective Coating, which is our selected vendor, also referred as GPC, has completed over 25,000 work orders during this first six-month period. 96% of those work orders were completed within 48 hours. And it's important to note that we continue to have a very active volunteer force. Our volunteers range from the resident that removes graffiti from their street to our super-volunteers that patrol whole neighborhoods in search of graffiti to abate. And volunteers also include those that report graffiti, with the number of San Jose Clean app users increasing every month. Currently, we have over 4,000 app users, and that number is increasing regularly. Metrics are important to the anti-graffiti program. GPC is trending at a lower rate than the same period last year. The yellow chart to the left explains the cost for graffiti eradication. The upper line represents the cost for last fiscal year, and the lower red line represents the cost for this current fiscal year. The blue chart to the right covers square feet of graffiti eradicated, and it also shows graffiti for last year as compared to this current fiscal year. The upper line is last year's, and the red line, the lower line, represents this current fiscal year. And again, it shows a lower trend in graffiti eradication. Ongoing, this provides an appearance of lower no-graffiti at a trackable, lower cost. The San Jose Clean App, oops, thank you. The San Jose Clean App allows users to provide feedback on service. Satisfaction levels are high. 93% of those surveyed rate the quality of work as excellent. 92% rate response time as excellent. And Attachment B of the report lists the actual ratings and comments from users. Anti-graffiti program continues now for multiple ways to report graffiti, such as the San Jose Clean App that I've mentioned, the toll-free call center, and through email. With the popularity of the smartphone devices, the app has become the most common reporting method, with 65% of all calls for service coming through the San Jose Clean App. Our partnerships are vital to the success of the anti-graffiti program. Police and code enforcement continue to be an integral part to suppressing illegal graffiti activity. Partners such as Caltrans and Union Pacific Railroad are also vital. In fact, within the last 10 days, there's been significant progress towards getting the highway bridges cleaned up. Thanks in part to various council members that encourage Caltrans and Union Pacific, we are tentatively scheduled to start cleaning the highway bridges in mid to late May. Also, Caltrans recently streamlined their operations, providing quicker responses to graffiti on abutments and sound walls, and has issued an RFP that is similar to the San Jose model. We cannot stress how important the support from our volunteers are to our program. Majority of our discussion so far has been about the anti-graffiti program, but another portion of our report covers the anti-litter program, and I'd like to take this quick moment to announce that the Great American Litter Pickup Day is coming on April 20th. This is a great opportunity for residents to volunteer to help clean up San Jose. Information about the event is listed on the city's website. Thank you to all the council members for their support of this exceptional program that makes San Jose a great place to live and work. That concludes the report.
With that, we're available for questions.
Thank you very much, staff. This presentation was actually heard at the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee, and we commend you for the great work that you do. We also wanted to, I also wanted to thank GPC for all the great work that they did. I just wish that, you know, Caltrans or UOP would also use their service and develop a smartphone applications like San Jose Clean, so that they can get folks out there to clean up their properties, you know, within the adequate timeframe. But given, having said that, I just wanted to thank you for the great work and the great report. The mayor's not here, so I want to take some public comments now. We have some folks who are here to speak, and then after that, we'll have council deliberations. Tina Moro, sorry.
It's late. My name is Tina Moro, and I am here as the founder and the managing director of the Art Box Project. And I'm here to say a big thank you to the city's anti-graffiti staff for being such wonderful collaborative partners with me, as we each battle graffiti and tagging in our own respective ways. And there's a big thank you I owe to other city departments who have also cheered this project on, and also a big thank you to council. You guys have listened to me about the project and contributed, and I really appreciate that. Could you show the slide? I wanted to give you an update on this project as it is today. Again, we started this in September of 2011. Today, I have 42 boxes complete. I've got 21 in, excuse me, 20 in process. And to date, since 2011, I've had 20 incidents of vandalism. Every San Jose district has been engaged, which is great, and I want to stress that I think the success of this project is because it's community-led and community-owned. The heart and soul is our sponsors, the community sponsors, they invest time and money in the art, and our artistic community, who invest their time and their talent to put original works of art on utility boxes. And I think that we can certainly say in San Jose, more art is a very good thing, and I think the Art Box Project is an example of really good collaboration, both with the city and the anti-graffiti team, and also the community. So thank you.
Al Morales?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you. I am a big supporter of the cause of removing graffiti from our cities and our counties and so forth. So I know the Parks Department is doing an awesome job. GPC is also doing a great job. The San Jose Conservation Corps, who I represent today, used to do this service in partnership with the City of San Jose. We didn't only just teach our students how to run a power washer, how to do a roller or sprayer. We tried to turn their lives around so that they can go away from that negative activities or behaviors, and help them to see the talent that they had and just put it in a different direction. We pushed them into college, we pushed them into post-secondary education, and utilize that talent that they had, because it takes a lot of talent and skill to be on a bridge with spray paint or a marker, or whatever the case is. And so that's confidence. We just looked into that, we tapped into it, but then we just try to say, hey, you know, let's hone that, let's focus that, so you can become a graphic artist either digitally, or mechanically, or handwritten, or hand-style. And that's what we try to do. We are the San Jose- We are the San Jose Conservation Corps. I have two of my students who will be speaking as well. We thank the efforts, it's a great effort. I see a big impact in my neighborhood, District Five. I know I see it all over San Jose. And we do want to partner up with Caltrans. We do want to partner up with railroad companies. And we are a service. We're ready to help out. We have the labor, we have the tools, we have the ability. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Eugenia Gonzalez.
Thank you for being up here. Well, first of all, my name's Eugenio Gonzalez, and I just wanted to remind you guys about the San Jose Conservation Corps. It's a great program. It's, I've been in it for about three months. It's helped me out a lot, it's helped me realize that graffiti is a, it's a nice thing, but also you could use it for, you can make money off of it instead of hitting, like writing on walls and stuff. You could put it on a piece of paper. Some people might like it. A lot of people like my art. They've gone up to me, asking me if I could draw something for them. And it's, it's, it's just great watching other students, like, realize that graffiti is a nice thing, but you could do many other things with it. And Conservation Corps has helped me out a lot. I mean, it's nice helping out the city. I've cleaned up a couple of areas, you know, go out, clean up the walls, paint over the graffiti. And it's, it's nice just to, like, help out my friends and help them realize that, you know, you could make something out of nothing. And Conservation Corps has helped me out a lot by doing that. And I don't know, that's it. Thank you.
Dulce Alvarez.
My name is Dulce Alvarez. I have been in the San Jose Conservation Corps for three years. This charter school, it has helped me a lot. Before, I remember that I used to go to high school and just, like, I just, like, was going home or was going, I used to go with my friends, do some graffiti, just to kick it, chill. I didn't graduate. Then some, one of my friends talked to me about the San Jose Conservation Corps. I decided to take a chance. I went and applied. I have engaged a lot of experience in it. Right now, they have, like, a lot of good programs. They have the landscaping program, Jute Bill, and recycling, which helps the environment a lot. We're young students, we just need opportunities. And we're ready to help out, taking out, removing all the graffiti. We just need, we just need an opportunity to do it. Right now, I see myself in the future, working for San Jose Water District Company or the city of San Jose. I don't, right now, they helped me to go to college. They helped me to pay classes. This is a good program, and we just need, we just need help from you guys. So give us a chance, and we promise we'll do better. And also, we can help our friends by showing them that we can do much more things than just writing on walls, going out on the bridge, like, doing graffitis or tagging everywhere on the freeways and all that. We can do much better, like, going, going to college, take classes, take courses, to do, to work for TV design, to do TV designers or something else. We can make a good, a good decision by going to San Jose Conservation Corps. And this charter school, it's really good. It's really good. It's a good program. So I hope you guys help us, and we can help us, we can help you guys and take care of our environment, because it's our future. Thank you.
Richard Zappelli.
Representing the World Neighborhood Association, I'm basically here to say thank you for all the programs the city has invested in that are anti-graffiti. Cleanups have been very quickly in private property. Our city councilmen, working with the business community and other people, have made sure that graffiti is removed within an hour or within, I'm sorry, within a day of the time it goes up. We do have some troubled areas that we don't know how to address yet. We're working with the state of California, all along the interstate. There are walls that are 60 to 100 yards long with major graffiti that would take truckloads of paint to remove. That's something we're still struggling with trying to figure a solution for. But for everything the city's done and all the services that are involved, thank you very much.
Ross Signorino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's disgusting to have to drive on 280 and go under that ridiculous sign that somebody put up, Tommy, whatever his name is. And then what was more ridiculous, the San Jose Mercury put a picture of it right in their newspaper, giving it more publicity. That's exactly what they want. Trashing a beautiful city like San Jose is outrageous. And I want to thank and praise those people who volunteer to go out and wipe out as much as this graffiti in the city as much as they can. They deserve a lot of praise. Mr. Mayor, meaning no disrespect to you, sir, you just rested, just not too long ago, asked and requested for Bud Sealy on baseball, to have a personal face-to-face meeting with him. Again, I say no disrespect towards you, but what I understand, our vice mayor in radio programs saying that it takes so many different entities to wipe out that thing over that thing where we have that graffiti over 280. Mr. Mayor, please meet face-to-face with those people whose entity it is to make sure that we can get rid of that graffiti on 280 in an applicable time, not wait forever. Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to bring this fact to the front, because people are going to see this, and they think they can get away with this. We must not allow them to get away from it. The penalties in law should be severe whenever they're caught, and make sure that they are caught some way or another. We don't have to close down the whole highway to say that we're going to have to paint this thing. How did they put it up there in the first place? No one sees them? No eyewitnesses of any kind? This is such a secret? This is what should go out in the newspaper, saying, "We will reward you financially if you come forward and tell us who these people are." You don't have to mention your name. Just go ahead and tell us, and we'll prosecute in every way we can. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilmember Chemus.
Yeah, I also want to thank, thank you for the progress that you've made in our local communities. And during the last meeting that we had, the Neighborhoods meeting, I asked you if we're going to make any progress with our partners, the trains. And I share that I cannot stand driving underneath that R.I.P. Tommy sign and some of the stuff that's going on, on the walls. It seems like it's going up faster now. During the meeting, we had met, they actually cleaned up, cleaned up, and then now they're back again, driving down 87, they, all those tags have come back. You mentioned something about an application that they're developing. Can't they just use ours and have ours, you know, be tagged to them? Otherwise, we're going to have to teach our community to download two applications to do pretty much the same job.
Yes, thank you, council member. We really have made good strides in the last few months, and I really need to let you know that we're making good progress with our partners. Both Union Pacific and Caltrans have been meeting with us over a half a dozen times in the last few months. As we, as we discussed earlier, before we abate those overpasses, we really have to put up the barriers at each end to ensure that it will stay graffiti-free after we go ahead and close the freeways and abate it. Caltrans has actually put out an RFP, and GPC, our vendor, is one of the applicants. And so in an ideal scenario, from our perspective, if they were selected, then we could utilize the same application throughout San Jose. You know, of course, that's a competitive process that they'll be utilizing and making a decision in the next few months.
I also had some ideas here. Is it, is it possible to put cameras on these so that we can actually catch these criminals? Motion sensors, cameras, something electronic so that we know who's doing it? You know, some, something, we're talking about very high walls and stuff, put something on the top so that, looking down, and I'm sure we might catch people in the act.
Yes, absolutely. Anything is possible. It's a matter of resourcing it, and then it's a matter of reviewing the tape, and then working with police to prioritize that in order to follow up. But we have been working positively our inter-agency collaboration. I think Mario can add a little bit about what we've been doing and coordinating with the police department.
Excuse me, my voice is loud, but not that loud. As my director Julie has stated, San Jose PD is very committed to addressing this issue side by side with us, although they've lost their enforcement dedicated staff. The issue of making sure that enforcement is a deterrent that's known by our tagging community is going to be a priority in this coming year. Acting Chief Escavell and Acting Deputy Chief or Assistant Chief Garcia have both had conversations with us, and which we're going to find hybrid ways to make sure that enforcement is taken seriously in this city. Because minus that, I think the taggers of our community get this sense of there aren't, there aren't implications, there aren't consequences. So I think it's an imperative factor that we get back to enforcement and not just simply eradication.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I applaud the efforts of yourself and the police chief. I just was, wanted to ask you if, you know, if cameras would help, and if, and if it's legal to use them in these areas, these are the things that I'd like to know. If it is, I think it's a very inexpensive solution of getting better enforcement.
Absolutely, council member. There are other municipalities that have had varying levels of success with cameras. These cameras are easily graffiti-coated over by the same tagger and thus become ineffective. But there are, there are mechanisms out there that use technologies such as cameras that take photos, that send out bright lights, that even scream at you, that tell you, "You have been monitored, a photo will be sent to SJPD." We'll continue to look into the appropriateness, the cost-effectiveness of these type of measures, and implement them where we can, sir.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see how this program has moved forward since 2011. I know that I supported it then, and I support it now. I was here to vote for that, and, and I think that, you know, this alternative service delivery has really proven itself. And I suspected that when we got the smartphone app, that it was going to become the primary way of folks reporting this, and sure enough, that's what's happened. I also made that suggestion over a year ago, I think, to Caltrans, that they take a look at the San Jose Clean App. I've said that many times, that that would be a good way if we could have one application. So I'm very glad to hear that there's an RFP and that they're, they're one of the companies that will be responding to that, because I think they've done a good job for us. And it would be good if we had one way to report graffiti. I mean, I think that's an important step forward and could, could help us with, with this. I had some questions as I was looking through the report. In terms of the volunteer effort, and first of all, I don't want to let this moment go by without saying thank you so much to the thousands of volunteers. And I think you listed 3,600. Do we still, we still have that many volunteers out there? I know we had over 3,000. I see you in the report, it says 3,600.
Yes, we're still, we're automating our volunteer system, so we'll be getting a more accurate number in the near future, but we're still pretty confident with that number.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the volunteers that augment what we do with our contractor and our city folks, because we couldn't do this without them. They're incredible, I know. There are many across the city. There's some in my district that get up at 5:30 in the morning before they go to work and drive through and have a regular route to, to report graffiti and to clean things up. So, you know, they really are doing a tremendous service for all of us, and I just really thank them and encourage more folks to continue to, to volunteer, because it really is a nice satisfaction to see these things happen, to get things cleaned up. And in terms of the app, I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing here in your graphs is that what we thought, what we were predicting might happen is happening. When you clean it up with a new methodology of covering the entire wall, you don't have that palette waiting, beckoning for the graffiti artists to come back and do the same thing again. So it's actually being maintained better. Is that, is that right? Is that what I'm seeing there?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
So we're seeing less of it. So that then reduces the cost for that area, so we can do more, and, and that's a really good thing. In terms of the volunteer management system that you guys are looking at, do we have budget for that, or is that something we're going to be looking at down the road, or?
The volunteer management system is actually a citywide system that's being coordinated by the city manager's office, so it'll be available for all departments, and it is a funded project.
And so we, so we have to go out and purchase that, or we already have the software then, or we have to go?
It's, we've already purchased the software.
We already have it. Great, okay, that's really good. And are we networking with other volunteer-type groups out there? I know there's a lot of groups that have volunteer, you know, cloud-based software there. I cannot think of the, there's a very popular one, its name's not coming to me right now, but are we working with those kind of groups that are already out there to kind of network with them?
Councilmember, yes. The name slips me also as to these other groups, but the concept of, of working with more groups that have volunteer bandwidth is probably one of the major reasons we moved this initiative under the Mayor's Gang Task Force, with the momentum and the wide range of partners and the opportunities for service learning for youth to come back and combat this issue. Many people would say that our youth are the cause, but our youth can also be very much a part of the solution. So that volunteerism and making sure we're working with other networks, I think the Mayor's Gang Task Force is going to be one of the largest networks we can incorporate into this effort.
That's, that's very good news. I am also concerned about our continuing need for the enforcement aspect of this, and I'm aware that SJPD used to have folks that were dedicated, that would be able to review the graffiti and catch violators, and they would look at the database, because as these things get uploaded, they get sent to that database. And we can have cameras everywhere, but if no one's looking at what the camera's producing, it's not going to be a lot of enforcement happening. So realizing the budget situation, how are we, how are we going to be, how are we going to address actually using that data? Is it currently being used now?
Councilmember, absolutely critical to this, as we previously stated, is that enforcement angle. Although PD has limited resources, each of the three divisional captains are on board with the quality of life issue, that this issue of blight does create a perception of unsafety. So even SJPD is committed. What we need to do is make sure we start utilizing GPC's database. They have an amazing database that can actually track the most prolific taggers and geomap where they're actually tagging, and the density in the areas which this particular individual is tagging. I think we'll be able to hone in those limited PD and enforcement resources to not try to cast just a random net, but really go after that prolific set or that prolific tagger and send that message out. Because when you hit the head of a tagging crew, believe me, every tagger in that set knows that enforcement is real.
That sounds good. So you're going to, so work with GPC because they have some more capabilities.
GPC and SJPD, it's one of our top priorities in the coming months, councilman.
Okay, great. Well, good report. Look forward to the audit, I guess in June, to really give us some idea of where we are with this program. But thanks so much.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you for the report, staff. It's very well put together. I do have a couple of questions, one being, are we, based on the staff report, it looks like we're on track for you not to have to come back to council for an increase?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And so my next question would be, I noticed on Attachment A, which, which has a map of the city, and it has these designated zones, these, I think they say, GPC zones? Is there, has there been any discussion about expanding these zones? Because I would, I'm assuming that these zones are the automatic routes where GPC's, you know, patrolling and taking down graffiti in these main thoroughfares. Is that correct?
The zones specifically, we direct GPC to respond within 24 hours in those zones. It's a contractual obligation, although they still report to the rest of the city. They won't not abate something outside of the zones. And as they convert these zones from a restoration model where they're, they're painting over all the old graffiti, and they clean up the districts, these zones, we're expanding. In March, we expanded into this Zone 5, which drops down into Council District 7 on the very south, south-central San Jose area. And as we get these zones restored, they, we move them into what we call a maintenance mode, where all they have to do is paint a specific tag as opposed to a larger area, and then we create a new zone. And we'll, we'll keep growing those zones until the entire city is one big zone. And we base that information on working with the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force, so we look at gang activity as well as graffiti activity throughout the city.
So when you're painting those specific tags, after you've painted over a big piece, that's not necessarily deterring them from, from, from doing that's not necessarily deterring them from doing graffiti. What it is, it's actually making it easier to eliminate the blight by it not looking like a patchwork, right? Is that a better description of that?
That is correct. It's a beautification model, but it does make it easier to hit it the next time, so we can just hit a smaller area.
Well, they're going to hit it anyway, because, I mean, it's an empty canvas, and a tagger's going to tag regardless of, but what it is, is it's easier to make it look nicer, where you just go with the same color that you already had, that you previously painted over.
That's correct. It does make it easier.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. I think the other thing that I wanted to ask was, oh, so given that these zones have this 24-hour, if it's reported, it needs to come down, you are still, you still have the routes, right? Routes in specific parts of the city where they're, you know, where they're patrolling the main thoroughfares and they're taking them down as they see them, right?
That's absolutely correct. So we have a 48-hour performance measure citywide, 24 hours within the zone or for a gang, and then we also have preemptive routes where we know that tagging occurs on a regular basis.
Okay. And the 48-hour citywide, that's if they're called in?
That's correct, but it's proactive and reactive. It's a combination of both.
Right, right. But if it's not called in, then something's going to stay there for a week, or two weeks, or a month, unless it's called in.
That's possible. I guess it is.
Okay. So, again, just feedback, it would be great if there's more consistent throughout the city, you know, because we all have major areas that are constantly getting hit, that that get expanded over time. And I know I say it every time you give the report, but I think that that's being proactive. And again, you know, that's some of the stuff that we used to do. And so that's just, you know, constructive feedback. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilmember. And if you see any of those zones in your area, please let us know, and we'll make sure we get those added to the route.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank Tina Morrow again for the art box project, and also the staff for doing a great job. I noticed that we have, in my district, graffiti actually drastically being on the decline, except for some freeway, you know, Caltrans or Union Pacific area, or sometime on the PG&E right-of-way. So I was wondering, can we, the city, be able to go in and clean up those graffitis which other people's properties, and then somehow recover the costs from the business or agencies?
Yes, councilmember, we do have the authority to do that. What we prefer to do with our inter-agencies is advise them of the graffiti, and that's our first step anyway, and then have them attempt to remove it. If they don't, we have the authority to do so and then charge them. But thus far, they've been responsive in getting to it. The challenge becomes is they don't have the same timeframe in their particular organization as we do. We hold a pretty aggressive schedule for ourselves with the 48-hour performance measure. Some of them have a longer timeframe.
Can we do, apply our timeframe on theirs? I mean, if their timeframe's every three, six months, I don't think it's acceptable.
Yes, councilmember, currently, there is a requirement in the municipal code for the individual business owner or agency to remove the graffiti, but there isn't a timeframe associated with that.
How long is that timeframe? Do we have personal restriction on it?
The timeframe's generally based on the response from planning, building, and code enforcement when it becomes adjudicated effort. So code enforcement, after our anti-graffiti program has contacted the property owner and requested the graffiti be abated, code enforcement then will be brought in if we don't get compliance, and they will have a 60-day waiting period to allow the property owner to abate that graffiti. It's the current policy.
Councilmember, I want to make sure there's not confusion, because when you're talking about UP and Caltrans, it presents a whole separate issue, and even if you did it, there's no guarantee you're going to get paid back or reimbursed. So that's a big issue. Compelling the railroad or compelling the Caltrans to, even if you did the cleanup, even if you could do the cleanup, represents a different issue. This is, I think, with respect to private property, we do have procedures in the municipal code, but UP and Caltrans presents a novel problem, and that's what I think staff has been struggling with.
But PG&E Comcast will be a different story, because I noticed a lot of graffiti on one of those boxes.
Yeah, and we also have with the boxes, I think, as part of the encroachment permits, we have requirements as part of the permit process that they maintain it as well. So we have both municipal code and permit, permits that we can enforce.
The question is, can we go in and clean up and then charge them? Because I don't want to, you know, wait for them to respond to graffiti problem that's not their main course of business.
Yes, councilmember, we do have the authority to do that. It has been our practice to ask them to do that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Chu, if I may also add on that issue of their timeframes and their turnaround time, we've expressed our dissatisfaction with the disparity between turnaround times with the city and Caltrans. They've acknowledged, sir, to a large extent, they're making efforts. I really believe that the GPC vendor will allow their turnaround time and response times to improve in the near future. They've also made efforts currently within the 280 corridor. You may have seen a new painting crew trying to aggressively abate there, and that is a reflection of the meetings we've been taking place and them taking a look at their current resource allocation and their teams. And they've actually decided to pull one staff person from the four supervisors in this geographical area and create an actual painting crew. And this is a new nuance that came about within the last two weeks, sir. And it's their efforts to address the fact that we've been pretty blunt and straightforward with them, that their turnaround times just pale compared to our 48 hours, and that we need them to step it up. And I start seeing the GPC vendor option and this new crew as their efforts trying to catch up to us, sir.
They should reward our good performance, huh?
Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, everyone, for your efforts. I know it's a long, hard road, but it feels like we are making some progress. And particularly, thanks to everyone who's been working hard with UP and Caltrans. I know we still have a ways to go there. And on that subject, wanted to know, does Caltrans rely on a contractor to do their highway work, or are those Caltrans employees?
Councilmember, yes. As Mario was just explaining, Caltrans uses their maintenance staff. And in the past, their practice had been just to have their general maintenance staff be responsible for that. But even as soon as, just a few weeks ago, they've taken dedicated staff away from the generic maintenance and said, "These folks will only focus on graffiti."
Okay. I'm sorry, forgive me for not catching all that. So, okay, I guess my question ultimately was going was seeing if there was some way we could all contract with the same group, whether it's Caltrans employees or with an independent contractor, just to see if we can all be communicating with the same people. It would just be nice to know there was actually somebody who's going to respond with anything resembling the kind of response we have in our city.
We're very hopeful with this RFP process that Caltrans has put out. It's already getting closed, and GPC is a bidder. And we're hopeful that if GPC is a successful bidder, it'll be a much more collaborative effort and one window into abating graffiti in San Jose.
Great. Question that comes up a fair amount, particularly among some of the more proactive folks in my neighborhood, is frustration around the individual limits that are placed on folks who report. And it's particularly a concern, I think, in a lot of sort of struggling neighborhoods where you don't have a lot of people who are really engaged, and so maybe it's just the one or two folks who are willing to make the effort. And obviously, those are often neighborhoods where you have the most tags. And maybe a lot of other members of the community, you know, don't want to be talking to the city, maybe the language issues, maybe there are all kinds of issues with, you know, how they feel about talking to government. And so putting constraints or limits really hampers the ability of some of these communities to stay on top of it, and seems, you know, inversely harmful to them. How could we, is there a way we can just lift the cap?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember, with any new program, we're trying new things, testing new things. One of the models we explored was that in the code enforcement area, code enforcement limits the number of reports that are able to be provided by an individual. And so we modeled something similar to that for a short period of time, but we decided it really wasn't, as you said, the best model. What we're doing is when we get those super-users that report 30, 40, 50 tags in a morning, what we're doing now is we're reaching out to them and trying to gain that insight and information they have on what's happening in their neighborhood, and trying to coordinate GPC's efforts or other volunteer efforts to combat that. So at this point, there is no limit.
They're telling me they're being shut down.
Well, and just, we can talk offline, see how that's happening.
That's been the report from two people I've talked to in the last couple of days. So there may be some miscommunication with JPC, and maybe we can work that out.
Okay, definitely. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, and thanks in particular to all the volunteers, and congratulations, Tina, on the great success. It's wonderful to see 42 art boxes down, 20 more to go, and we'll keep plugging away. Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera.
Yeah, Julie, I just want to make sure I understood the report right, because I kind of heard a different answer a while ago. So when I look at page two of your report, it's basically showing, and the graph above it is showing that what we expected was that repeat taggers would be deterred by our property restoration efforts, meaning that they wouldn't come back to those same places, and GPC could spend some time in other places and expand their territory. And it sounds like that has happened. So we have seen, it says here, a steady fall in graffiti volume over time. So doing the process that they do is causing less graffiti to return to those same locations. Is that right or wrong?
It's a mixed answer, yes and no. I would have to say that graffiti's about fame, councilmember. If I'm a graffiti artist, I want to tag where my art or my tag and moniker will stay up for days, if not weeks. And I believe that the 48-hour to 24-hour response time is a deterrent in that sense. It still will be tagged, as Councilmember Campos alluded to. A tagger that has their mindset to doing it will do so. But even they have limited supplies and resources, so they definitely want to go where they know it won't be abated. And right now, it seems like our freeway walls, et cetera, seem to be more viable to them because of the great work we do. But, you know, conversely, so is Caltrans jumping on board with GPC so we can address this mutual?
So we're kind of driving them to the freeways, I guess, huh?
I won't take credit for that.
Not that that's our desired result. Well, I just know, and I'm just trying to understand that, because, I mean, we wouldn't be seeing a steady fall in this if there wasn't having some impact. I mean, that's important to me, because that's one of the things we thought we would see. And I'm just trying to understand, is that what we're seeing? And it sounds like, at least in some places, we are seeing that, because otherwise, we would be spending more money to do, you know, to do the same thing. If we're seeing that we don't have to add to the budget, then somehow this must be working out the way we thought, right?
Correct, councilmember. We are seeing a downtrend in the square footage abated, but I wouldn't want to leave you with the impression that people weren't re-tagging. There is re-tagging, but we're addressing it on a very rapid basis.
Okay. Yeah, because I know some areas where we actually have checked, we've seen it not reoccur in some areas. So I think that's, it's an important point you're making, and I appreciate Councilmember Campos's point. So there's some that are just more persistent areas, that's probably where you're getting maybe the people calling you 30 times, too. So my last point would be that I think it's really important for all of us to make sure people do report it. I know that we put it out in our newsletter, we tell people, we constantly tell people to report the graffiti. So I think, you know, just making sure everybody knows about it, because I always meet people that didn't know about it. I always, you know, "Do you know about San Jose Clean?" No. And I get them to download it right on the spot. And they're really fascinated. I mean, people really get excited. And for those people who don't have smartphones, the kids in the neighborhood do. I don't care where you are, somebody has a smartphone. So I tell them, "Go find a person that has a smartphone and use it." So I think just getting more people to use it, too. But, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Camus.
Sorry, I didn't ask this before, this, running again here. You said that California has a RFP process underway. In the RFP, have you actually looked at it? Do you know if they have the time commitments that we do in our RFP?
No, I'm sorry, councilmember, we don't know that. But we could find out and get that information back to you.
That would be, that would be great, because, you know, they could be telling them, "Oh, cleaning up in two weeks," or something that wouldn't really suit our needs. And I would also like to see if you thought that changing the municipal code to include a time sensitivity would be in our best interest, or if you think that we should pursue that.
Councilmember, at this time, we think we have the right tools in the toolkit, but we need to continue to work with our partner agencies to enforce the rules that we do have. And so we'll continue to do that with all due diligence.
Thank you.
Councilmember Constant.
I wasn't going to say anything, and then Mario, you called them artists. And we're talking about people who are defacing our city and costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm just calling you out on that. You corrected yourself really quickly. And you called them vandals. So I'm just going to remind you of that every time I see you from now on.
Please, please do, because the difference between art and graffiti is permission sometimes, you know? So.
I have no request of public to speak, other than what we've already had. Councilmember Herrera.
One more question. The freeway signs, so we've talked about the bridges, but the freeway signs, there's signs now that are getting so defaced, you can barely read the sign anymore. Is that part of the RFP, too? So they'll be looking at taking care of the freeway signs?
That's absolutely correct. And just to clarify, so the sound walls are somewhat easier for the maintenance crews to abate, because they can get to them quickly? It's the signs and the overpasses that cause us to have to close the freeways that are more challenging.
And are they going to put up some barrier to prevent it from reoccurring? Because I would think that's one of the, you know, you're down in Southern California, you see some ugly, ugly barbed wire and everything else around their signs, but you know what? You don't see the graffiti on them. So I don't know if they're planning to do that, or is that...
Absolutely correct. And that's where we don't really want to abate until we have those barriers, because then it'll just be re-tagged. So it's part of our overall effort to have the barriers.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if we have a motion on this or not. I don't think so. We do now have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Last item is a housing authority item. Housing Authority of City of San Jose, we have one item on the agenda, the Moving to Work 2014 Annual Plan in collaboration with the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Clara.
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie Corselia, Director of Housing. And what we have before you today is a request for city support of the Moving to Work Plan, which is a document that the Housing Authority needs to do every year and submit to HUD in a similar way to what we do with our consolidated plan. Just as, since we do have a new member, just to make sure that you're aware, the City of San Jose has its own housing authority. However, through a one-year contract with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, we delegate the responsibility for administration of the Section 8 program to the Housing Authority. So the MTW program itself is a really important program. It gives our, both the Housing Authorities, San Jose and Santa Clara County, a lot of flexibility with how it can manage the program. Our Housing Authority has been very strong in seeking that flexibility, has made a lot of changes, and they are recommending a couple of additional changes in this plan that we do support. The council has asked in past years for there to be increased coordination and cooperation between the two housing authorities, particularly as it relates to homelessness. There's been good progress this year in that regard. The city is much more involved. We're now at the table at the board meetings, and we also have additional coordination meetings that are regular on our schedule. What we're asking for you today is to accept the report, but to also authorize me to sign a letter to present to the Housing Authority in support of the Moving to Work Plan, also with support to continue this collaboration that I mentioned, that we are implementing now, to request that as future vouchers become available, that they continue to be made available, a percentage made available for the homeless. And also, the Housing Authority is about to embark on a strategic planning process, and we're asking to be at the table. We were told this morning at the board meeting that we will be, so we're asking for it, but they've already... So we're asking for it, but they've already indicated that that will be the case. And then as far as the last, the third recommendation is that we support the Housing Authority in its efforts to respond to the impacts of sequestration. You may have seen the article in the paper on Sunday. The, the cuts to our Section Eight program can be devastating if they are not overturned. And the Housing Authority now is, is undergoing the difficult process of deciding how those cuts will be made. I would add that tomorrow, the president is supposed to submit his budget and we'll have a better sense of, of where the president sees that going. But for now, just as we had to do for the CDBG program, the Housing Authority also has to plan for the potential that, that these cuts are real. So with that, I'm open for any questions. I do know we have Housing Authority represent, representatives, and we may have others who wish to speak.
Thank you. I'd like to take the comments first because we do have Alex Sanchez from the Housing Authority and Jennifer Loving from Destination Home. I'd like to hear from both of them before we get into the council discussion. Alex, why don't you go first?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Alex Sanchez, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. I'm here to support the staff recommendation and with specific focus on item number three. So if you look at your staff report, it basically requests that the city council aggressively advocate for the restoration of those HUD funds that were mentioned in this Sunday's newspaper. The impact of those cuts would result in increased rents or possibly termination from the program. As you know, we're the second largest housing authority in California. When you add both the City of San Jose vouchers and the Santa Clara County vouchers, we have seventeen thousand households that we serve. We also work with ten thousand landlords throughout the county. So at this point, I know you've had a long afternoon, so I'd like to keep my comments short and answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from Jennifer Loving. And if anybody has any questions, we'll get to questions.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Loving with Destination Home. Thanks for making time for this item today. And I love what the staff is recommending, and I hope that you support the focus on vouchers for chronic homelessness. As, as we've read in the paper and you've heard from the Housing Authority, we could face a potential devastating crisis if the Housing Authority is, is forced to reduce vouchers due to sequestration. And numbers I've heard could be as much as a thousand households could be cut. And I don't, I think that I, that we all agree that would be devastating. And I know that District Seven is one area that would be hit really hard with that. And so one of the requests I would like to make is that if it does come to that, and hopefully it won't, but if it does come to that, that, that you will use your authority to make sure that we've evaluated every possible option before reducing vouchers in our community. Make sure that we've evaluated that as a community, make sure that's the best possible strategy and the only one that we have left. And once we get past this, which I'm assuming will be something we will get past, that we continue to use Section Eight vouchers and recognize them as one of our most precious resources in ending chronic homelessness. We can't end homelessness in our city without using vouchers. So thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor, when?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alex, for being here. Of course, thank you, Leslie, for all the work that has been done. I, I think that we can all agree that it would become very clear in the days ahead, the impact of sequestration. It's going to bring one of the biggest social service storms of all times for families who are currently receiving some forms of public subsidy from the local government, including the county here. Obviously, just from reading the press release from the Housing Authority of Santa Clara County, we know that the Section Eight program will encounter the biggest hit. And so I'm just really glad to see that both Alex and Leslie are on the same page in terms of the continuations of the collaboration between the city and the county. We have done really great work so far, obviously thanks to Destination Home and some of the other partners, to address the issue of homelessness. And if we don't continue to put forth the vouchers for the homeless individual, it's just going to be very, very tough for us to address the issue of homelessness and also trying to fulfill our goal of ending homelessness in the next ten years or so. Hopefully, it's way before that. But at the same time, I think that this situation presented a very unique opportunity for the county and the city to strengthen our partnership and our collaboration. And, and I, too, wanted to support, well, I support staff recommendation, but in regards to the item three, which is to support the Housing Authority efforts to restore the HUD funds as a loss, loss as a result of the sequestration, I think that's just really, really important. And I think it's going to be difficult to lobby Congress or the federal government to go back, you know, and, and trying to fund these programs. But there's really no loss in trying to move forward with that effort. So I strongly encourage that we continue our collaboration and our work toward ending homelessness in our city and our county.
Thank you. I have a couple of pieces of data I'd like to make sure I have got right. Okay. In the background section of the staff report, it says Housing Authority of Santa Clara County has an allocation of approximately sixteen thousand Section Eight vouchers from HUD and forty thousand, or forty percent of these vouchers are allocated to City Housing Authority. So does that mean that they're, that San Jose's vouchers go to San Jose folks and the other twelve thousand go, or whatever the, whatever the number is?
Sure, I can speak to that.
We have more than half the population and a lot more than half the poor people, so.
Yes, absolutely. The forty percent refers to the revenue that's received by the City of San Jose. The actual expenses within the County of Santa Clara, seventy percent of the vouchers are in the city limits of the City of San Jose. So there are not only City of San Jose vouchers, but thirty percent additional vouchers from the County of Santa Clara.
Okay, well, that's more consistent with the other numbers I've seen from the county about county services to San Jose residents.
Right.
And then on page three, we have a statement that says, according to the Housing Authority, more than one thousand one hundred and four fifty formerly homeless persons have been housed as a result of the twenty eight, two thousand eight to thirteen annual work plans. And since I'm trying to keep track of those numbers, I was using a number of three hundred and fifty people were housed that were chronically homeless as part of our Destination Home effort. So is the best number to use eleven hundred and fifty, Jennifer? Or three hundred and fifty? And what might be the difference? So I don't speak it wrong when I'm asked the, the questions.
Yeah, it's, it's a very good question, Mayor. I think the, the number, when you include all the various housing subsidies for homeless or formerly homeless over the past five years, since the mayor and the county board supervisors began the Blue Ribbon Task Force, has been two thousand four hundred formerly homeless currently receiving Section Eight. I'm not sure of the period of time, but I know that Destination Home has a significantly different focus, but I understand the number difference.
Yeah, I just don't want to use the wrong number at the wrong time.
Hi. When I, when, our number's actually three eighty-five now, which is pretty cool. That's the number of chronically homeless individuals and families housed as a result of the Housing a Thousand campaign. Of that, just a very, very small portion have received Section Eight. The allocation that, that we were so generously allocated last year, we just started to receive those this last quarter. So we've just started to access those. So it's a combination of, of VASH vouchers that, that are an allocation to the Veterans Administration, that our partners at the VA are using. It's the county subsidies, they're shallow subsidies, and it's HUD, Permanent Support of Housing allocations is the majority of that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Liccardo?
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who's working so hard on these very challenging issues. Now, Alex, I can attest to your hard work and lobbying because I ran into you on Capitol Hill at the Rayburn Building, and I know you were hustling as we all were. So thank you for that. Just a couple of quick questions as we contemplate the impacts of, of sequestration. Am I right in reading the memo at page five that the one hundred vouchers for the chronically homeless will be provided? The question is, what happens thereafter? Is that right?
That's exactly right. We have an MOU with the County of Santa Clara for one hundred vouchers. That's a current commitment. We're going to keep to that commitment. Obviously, depending on the sequestration and the impact that we're going to have to analyze and present to our Board of Commissioners on April twenty-third is going to be different. It won't touch those four, one hundred vouchers that are currently committed.
Does, I know it's, it's not fruitful to engage in a lot of what ifs, but, you know, I know you have a new program here focused forward. Does that become the first casualty? I mean, do you start with what's new, or?
Again, this is a proposal to HUD, and this is some of the staff who are calling it the pre-quester. This is something that happened before the sequester. And this is a proposal to HUD that has to be filed by April fifteenth. We've been working on that since November of last year. But since the sequester actually occurred on March first, we're going to submit, get authority to operate that program if funds actually become available. We actually don't know what, what the cut will be for the balance of the year because we have a contracted fiscal year. As you know, the federal fiscal year is October first through September thirtieth. We're already in month eight of the federal fiscal year. May first will be month eight. And so the actual funding commitments from HUD are yet to be determined. So a lot of things are really up in the air because of the sequester. And so we're doing quite a bit of analysis now and hope to have a complete report for our Board of Commissioners on April twenty-third. At that time, all of these various programs will be identified and the impact of the sequester will be used to determine exactly how we proceed.
Thanks, Alex.
I think that's it for the questions. Whoops, Councilmember Herrera?
I just wanted to thank Alex for, for coming in and testifying in our housing department. And Alex, from your experience back in Washington, do you, I, I know that one of the things, item three, is supporting the county's effort to restore the HUD funds. So I would think that would mean mobilizing Patton Boggs, our lobbyists, in, in moving forward. And I just, I guess I just want your thoughts on how.
Sure.
What you, what effect you think that might have?
I think there, there is a very strong report, and there's a strong response from the public sector. For example, the National League of Cities needs to be advised of the changes to programs that impact their residents immediately. The city's also an active member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Plus, you have IGR staff here that could help communicate the need to our representatives. I should point out that our delegation has been very supportive. I think Senator Feinstein, Senator Boxer have been absolutely champions for the kind of work that I'm proposing. Also, our House members here in this area, from Anna Eshu, Zoe Lofgren, Mykanda, and Sam Farah, which covers South County, I don't believe it has any part of San Jose, have very strong supporters. And as, as Councilmember Liccardo mentioned, we've been working very actively with our delegation in Washington about this issue. Again, the sequester is a one-time event. It's a ten-year commitment to cut discretionary spending. So whatever happens for the current budget year will be resolved by the House and Senate over time. But next year is another year where we may have to continue to cut even deeper into our programs. And so that's the reason for asking you and encouraging you to take the initiative to actively support changes in Washington.
And how many folks are, are we looking at that might end up not having the voucher or not, you know, potentially facing homelessness?
Yes, as I reported, it could be as many as a thousand, possibly as high as fifteen hundred. Again, the question from the mayor about the number of dollars committed to San Jose residents means that if, in fact, there's a reduction of a thousand to fifteen hundred households, that it's possible that the same number of households within the City of San Jose, the same percentage of those households will be impacted in the city. So it's a significant situation. We're actually looking at a number of changes to how HUD requirements impact our programs. And we will be asking for significant administrative relief and regulatory changes to allow us to make things more workable so that we reduce the impact on households currently in our program.
Well, thank you, and thank you, staff, for the, for the proposal. I think it's a, it's a solid proposal to move forward, and, you know, I'm very supportive of that.
Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for taking the time to meet with me and walking through a couple of these issues. I do have some follow-up questions, if you don't mind.
True.
Helping me understand a little bit better the, the Section Eight and the funding issue and the relationship. If the funding is decreased, or funding's decreased, is that associated directly with vouchers or funding levels? Generally, what I mean is can you maintain the same amount of vouchers if you were hypothetically to dip into your reserves? Or is that reduction voucher-based, not funding-based?
They are related. Each voucher is about fifteen thousand dollars a year. The average monthly assistance is about twelve hundred. Our current reserves represent about thirty days' worth of rental assistance, so it's, it can go really, really fast. And we obviously don't expect a one hundred percent reduction, but over time, it will ultimately get to zero. So the voucher allocation is based on dollars, and we divide the number of dollars per month, per unit, and that converts into the number of households assisted citywide. So if the dollars drop, the number of vouchers will also drop.
Okay. And as far as the decisions on how to, should we say, when a decision's made to decrease or reduce the amount of vouchers, the first, or the last in, the first cut approach, you know, that while it may be the simplest or maybe the fairest, depending on how you look at it, is that the only approach that you're looking at?
No, there are different ways of doing it. And in our staff report, I believe I've shared our March report with you.
Yep.
At the back end of that is a report from our Housing Programs Department that actually described six different ways to reduce our costs. And you'll see a lot of HUD acronyms and HUD lingo, but basically, we'll be using what is basically the subsidy standard and other ways of reducing costs by really effectively passing increased costs to the landlord and the tenant. Those will be discussed in some great detail at our April twenty-third meeting. I don't want to preempt the discussion of the staff at this point, but we will share that information once we publish it. I expect that the staff report will be published on April eighteenth, so at that time, we'll be sure to share it with city staff and with officers as well.
If I could follow up on that question, I think.
Please, that's where I was going to go next. Thank you.
I think your question was if, if there are a thousand households that would be cut, does it have to be the last in?
Mm-hmm.
And those last in for, for us are very important because those are a lot of the chronic homeless that we've recently placed.
We've just invested a lot to get off the streets, yes.
And so I think the, the question is, could you look at that differently? I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, it is. And I hate to actually offer a solution today because we're not able to complete our analysis.
Yeah, no.
But that is one way. There are other ways of doing it. Besides last in, first out, there's also first in, first out. And there's also other ways of doing it. So I think you'll see that in, in a very clear form when we publish our report on April eighteenth.
And then as far as our opportunity to weigh in on what we might think might be the best approach, that speaks a little bit to your, your work here, but is there additional direction or statements that we could offer and what our thoughts might be on this?
Well, on the nineteenth, right now, we have set a meeting with the county and city and the Housing Authority to go over this staff report Alex just mentioned. But I think, you know, it would be helpful to have input from the council on what you would like us to see. Clearly, you know, we've, we've been working really, really hard on our efforts to end homelessness. We would very much like to not see anybody impacted. If there's a way to figure out through these other methods that Alex mentioned that, that are in his staff report, that might make changes to the program that save money rather than, than cost us additional vouchers, that would be something that I, I think that we would want to see. And I think we, we would not want to see those chronically homeless people who we, we recently housed back on the streets. It would be, once, once you take someone who's been on the streets for twenty-four years, you provide them a house and you provide them case management and you give them stability, to then have them back on the streets would just be, it, it would.
Yes.
Yes.
Beyond words to describe, yes, devastating, and just not only to the efforts made and the investment made, but to that individual who, in a sense, really commitments were made just to support and help them. So outside of, you know, my thoughts, and not speaking for my colleagues, I don't know how best to do that. Oftentimes, when we do contracts, we give the authority to the city manager to go execute and, and do the work. I mean, I feel comfortable enough with your work and your experience and your, your recognition and knowledge of what San Jose's interests are in terms of being an advocate at that meeting and having the authority to speak on behalf of this council to a certain extent, of course, in terms of the investment you just talked about and where the council has provided recent direction on whether it's through our plan or any of the other documents that we've adopted recently. And I don't know if that's something that city manager, I guess, is nodding or going to speak?
Well, actually, I think that's a great idea. And the thing I was just going to add to your comment, councilmember, is we're also going to be entering into, into a period where hopefully, if the. where hopefully, if the budget proposals stand and, and we get to July, invest more in proactive cleanup of encampments, and so we're going to continue to see this issue for quite some time, and so I think it's very important, your comments, that we now, you know, take these thoughts to the table as we work with Alex.
Then, I guess if I could, I could move to the recommendation as listed in the document to accept the update, and also item B, to authorize the Housing Authority Executive Director, and also include language such that to have the authority to advocate on San Jose interests as provided in previous direction by council.
Right, we have a motion.
Then, my last question.
One last question.
I'm sorry.
Not a last question.
Go ahead.
Any question on your motion?
Yes.
Your, your third comment, there's, there's three recommendations in the staff report.
Oh.
So, I'm assuming your third comment.
Yes, it would include all three.
Was directed at, at bullet three.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. And one last question, and I'm, this is for Alex. Let me try and pull back from memory banks, I just went on a different direction and tried to recall, I had one last question for you, and it was related to the vouchers. Is it federal law that provides for these vouchers to be, the life of them permanent? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, could we put a timeline on them going forward, whether it's, I want to suggest one year, or three years, or five years, or 10, or 20, that might slowly provide us, if this is the direction that we're going federally with our dollars, and they're getting more finite and finite, is that a policy discussion that you can do, or is that federal law that doesn't allow us that?
Yes, we, we certainly can discuss that. I think that flexibility is only afforded to MTW agencies, so we're able to take advantage of that. There are maybe a handful out of the 3,500 housing authorities that actually have term limits. Most of them have been in really soft markets, where you're close to getting to an income level where you actually can't afford the typical two-bedroom rent. It's a pretty involved, involved discussion, we would be happy to talk to, I think we've had some initial discussions with the city about this. It is something that we can do, it's something that would require federal approval, we can seek that approval, but at the same time, it's something that I think requires, given our economics in our region, some pretty significant analysis.
Thank you. Thank you. It's the last question I have, no, my last comment is more of a statement in terms of emphasizing again the need and the issue that we're having with affordable housing, whether it's for homeless, for low-income, moderate market rate. We, we are, we know it's here, and I think this really speaks to the need for us to step up as a city council, as a city, and, and talk about this issue in a broader sense of what we're really going to do, is not standing on the sidelines and watching. I mean, we've talked about a number of different, different ways to get there, whether it's a JPA, whether it's a housing impact fee, whether it's the inclusionary zoning efforts on bypass councils, whatever it is, you know, I think time is not on our side and we really need to act. Thank you.
I think that concludes our discussion. We have a motion to approve as described by Councilmember Rocha. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved, taking us to open forum. Ross Señorino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One of the remarks that Councilwoman Herrera just made, something about graffiti, if we can put a cage around, or netting around these areas where it could prevent the people from getting and putting graffiti there, and I was thinking, we did a good job with pigeons, you know, they've got these little spikes now where pigeons can't land there and leave their calling card, you understand? Now, I hope, I hope this, does this, does not provoke a comment from Councilwoman Herrera right now, I'm just making the general statement, but another thought maybe came to my mind, thinking of the war zone over there in Afghanistan, and we have these droves flying over, you know, and they take photographs of, of the area, the, the hot area, the hot spots are the war zones, and maybe we could have these droves, maybe one or two, one would be enough, probably fly around in San Jose, if they don't develop some sort of artillery to shoot this down, or maybe put graffiti on the droves before they take off. That's another possibility we have to face. So I think that we do have some solutions, and I hope that I've enlightened you in some way along this area of solutions in regards to graffiti. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rajkirma Yeli?
Good evening, my name is Ms. Rajkirma, Mayor Reed, and councilmembers, I just wanted, here on behalf of, with my classmates Christina and Juan, we are graduate students at San Jose State University, and we're here on assignment for our policy class, and our professor said, "Go and stay till the end." We had no idea, we didn't know if it was going to be an hour or two, but this was, been very enlightening for us, we thank you. And I have one request, I wondered how we can access some of the reports that were discussed today, and, and, and then lastly, just wanted to make a comment regarding Councilman Campos. I don't think you remember me, but I work for County of Santa Clara SS Advocacy Unit, and my unit, my colleagues and I can never forget the remarkable work you did as a Chief of Staff when you were at Board of Supervisors, and it's really good to see you and a familiar face up there, so, thank you so much.
If you'll step over and talk to the city clerk, she'll point you to where all those staff reports and everything might be found. That concludes the open forum, concludes our meeting, we're adjourned.